Thank you very much. We need to call our meeting to order for the Deschutes County Commissioners. It is April 15th, 2020. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make one public service reminder is that your census form is due. It's significant for state funding, so please, please get your census form in if you live in Deschutes County or anywhere in Oregon. Thank you so much. I thought, Sharon, we had one letter that came through? Okay, okay. Thank you so much for doing that. Does anyone want to address our consent agenda?
I was able to review the minutes just now, so with that, I'll move the consent agenda, items one through five.
Actually, it's one through seven. There's a re-.
Seven, yep, yep. Got it.
Okay, good.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so thank you very much for that. So that takes us to action item number eight, which is regarding the Seismore Bridge. Cody, would you like to join us?
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, Deschutes County Road Department. The Road Department has prepared solicitation documents for the Seismore Bridge Rehabilitation Project. I believe the board is at least somewhat familiar with this project, but the scope of this project includes repairing all the distressed structural concrete, strengthening the superstructure, improving the bridge internal drainage system, replacing the bridge road surface to improve surface drainage on the bridge, and replacing the bridge rail, all while maintaining the historic nature and appearance of the Seismore or by its historic name, the Bull Creek Bridge. Department advertised for bids on March 4th. Bids were opened on April 1st. We received three bids for this project. Before you this morning is the Notice of Intent to Award contract to Markham &amp; Sons LLC, the apparent little bidder, with a contract amount of $498,961.51. Adoption of this Notice of Intent to Award will start a one-week protest period for interested parties to submit protests to our award of the contract. If no protests are received within that period, the contract will be awarded administratively. The total project cost is currently estimated to be $938,481. The project is being mostly funded by ODOT through the local agency bridge program. The program will pay for 89.73% of the total project cost. Presently, we anticipate the ODOT share of the project will be $842,099, and the county share of the project will be $96,382. If the Notice of Intent is approved and the contract's awarded, we anticipate the project work will begin in early May, and we anticipate work will be completed by the end of August. And during that time, we'll have Seismore Rug closed at the bridge with a detour provided via Couch Market Road. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board and answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Cody, for that excellent analysis of the project. We just might want to say on the record that the bridge was originally, wasn't it, built in like 1914?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make people aware of something that we're addressing, and it's over 100 years, so.
It was a Crook County Bridge at the time.
Yes, it was Crook County, so. So that's good. Are there any further questions?
Well, we learned a lot about the lay of the land and the neighbors and the community out there, and I want to thank the folks that did get engaged and, you know, talked about the right-of-way and historical nature of that, you know, that kind of point-to-point connection between Bend and Sisters back in the day. You know, the highway is the primary route now, but this is an alternate path. There are residents up and down that road, so it's going to be nice to have that, you know, facility refreshed and good for another 100 years, hopefully.
So Cody, this is Commissioner Henderson. Just one thought, I don't know if we have other projects we're going to be putting out to bid, but it seems like since this was put out March 3rd, when we didn't have the COVID-19, there may be different bidding mentality with people that are in these industries than there would have been if the economy had just gone on, so I don't know. It'd be something to look at for other contracts. I don't think it makes sense to go back and look at this, but I do think that they'll be more competitive going forward for a while.
Yeah, well, a couple of things on that. Yeah, we advertised in early March, but we received bids on April 1st. For the most part, my experience has been that contractors really start preparing their bids in the last week of the advertising period. I know that was the case in this one because all the bidders' questions came in the day before the bid opening, which we usually encourage our bidders to ask questions much sooner than that in the advertising period. But so bidders were bidding on this when we were in the thick of the COVID-19 situation here. But yeah, no, we're kind of generally seeing there's contractors are wanting to get to work. Highway projects are, you know, we've got less people on the road right now, so that kind of improves some of the productivity and safety on our projects, so contractors are wanting to take advantage of that as well. We're seeing that right now. We've got three active construction projects going on. We're paving out on Alphalfa Market Road this week. Contractors taking advantage of the, you know, not having as much traffic on the road. That's allowing them to be much more productive, not just right on site, but actually with hauling materials in from their asphalt plant, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're certainly seeing a little bit of the effects of the COVID-19 situation on our contractors and how they're bidding on projects and then how they're delivering projects also.
Great.
Well, this is a local company, and it is actually $140,000 less than the engineer's estimate. So I'm glad to know that a Redmond company will be doing the job and hopefully. So I think that is, that is good news.
So I'd move Chair Signature of Document Number 2020-072, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for the Seismore Bridge Rehabilitation Project to Markham &amp; Sons LLC.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much, Cody.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shemke?
Look at all the elbow room down there.
Yeah. I wish we had this much room down there. Tim Shemke, Director of the Department of Solid Waste. This item is Notice of Intent to Award Contract for Yard Debris and Wood Waste Management. So that's basically grinding and transport. We solicited six contractors, received the RFP, only two submitted a bid, Bar 7A from Redmond and T2, which I'm not sure where T2 is from. But we've used both of those contracts before. They kind of passed this back and forth. We base their bids on the volume that we had last year, and then we usually add a 20% contingency, assuming that our volumes are going to increase. That's what the bid numbers were based on. This is definitely a year when we very well could greatly increase the amount of material we accept. Discussion with Legal about what happens if we go past that not to exceed amount in the contract, and he felt that we could deal with that at that time through change order or other methods, you know. So we want to move ahead with this as bid. It does basically establish unit rates within not to exceed dollar amount. Any questions?
So it would be kind of a renegotiation, both parties just have a discussion if we got to that maximum, plus 20% even?
You know, I guess if we exceeded that maximum amount by a large enough dollar amount, then we may need to renegotiate. But I'm thinking that the unit rates are there and they will stay. You know, we'll just have to authorize more funding, you know, at the back end.
Yeah. Well, you know, T2 has been a contractor for us in the past. I know that they're kind of all over the state, so they're based in Sweet Home, but I want to thank them for their service in the past. See the big trucks and the grinders come and go in sometimes, so yeah.
It seemed like they were not real interested in this year. I mean, their bid was so much more than Bar 7As, and Bar 7A was pretty much in the ballpark where we've always been, you know. So I think T2 just kind of said, "Well, we'll throw a number there. If we get it, we'll be rich." "If we don't, that's okay."
At least we have two.
When did you put this out for bid?
In March, March of 2020.
It doesn't have the actual date, but.
What do you think was the reason the other four didn't bid that you talked with or?
I'm not sure, although we'll have more than these two, but typically we only receive those two bids. So other people are interested in looking, but they don't seem to be that interested, I guess. I don't know. I couldn't tell you why.
So mobilization is moving a grinder in place, a loader probably, and then having a truck coming and going with the grind.
They'll usually have an excavator, they'll pull in their grinder, an excavator to feed it, a loader on the back end to push it away or to load trucks.
Yep.
And then everything in the outlying areas, Nigus Northwest, Southwest, gets transported into Knott. At Knott Landfill, all they're doing is grinding what comes into that fire-free event, because Deschutes Recycling manages the organics program the rest of the year.
And are they grinding once or twice at the transfer?
Usually at the transfer stations, like Southwest and Northwest, we'll have them grind before fire-free and then after fire-free, and that's all that happens. Nigus is busy enough to where there may be one, possibly two more grinds throughout the year up there. And again, of course, Knott Landfill is a one-time deal for this contractor.
Yep, great. And this is going to be a function of fire-free success also.
Yes. Well, this deals with the aftermath of fire-free. So we'll, I mean, we'll deal with the volume of material that we get in, whether that's a high number or a low number.
People are paying for drop-off of yard waste other times of the year.
Yes.
There's always a volume coming in. It just spikes big in fire.
Yes.
So I guess maybe we're not clear. This is, so there's a $200,000 difference between them. So if we do, how's this connect to the other item we have on the agenda with regard to increasing costs? If we do a month-long fire-free, that would diminish the amount of materials we?
So we assumed, and this is just an assumption on our part, that we will double the volume that comes in in the event if we do a month-long event, 30 days instead of nine or 10 days. I don't, and I need to rethink this in light of last weekend, but I did not expect that we would see our volumes triple, even though we are tripling the amount of days at Knott Landfill.
What are you referring to for last weekend?
It was huge.
A big drop-off weekend?
Yes, we were overrun.
I was thinking maybe that was closing fire season also.
No, well, you know, I don't doubt, I think people, that's a factor. People are coming out. People are coming out, I think initially because they thought maybe the landfill was going to be closed as part of the virus response, so they wanted to get there before then. And then I think probably the biggest thing is we have a whole lot of people with nothing to do.
Absolutely.
They're cleaning out their garage, and they're doing their yard work, and they're coming out.
Yeah.
Saturday, we had, we had a safety situation. I had to make the call to suspend charges for yard debris. So it was free from 1:00 in the afternoon on, just to get the people, basically they were backing up. We get traffic backed up out on 27th Street. We have a very serious safety issue.
Amazing.
So we did that on Saturday. On Monday, we almost did the same thing. We had some pretty bad long lines, but Deschutes Recycling is doing a pretty good job of trying to deal with that. They put in a temporary second transaction processing line, and they'll make that permanent, so that helped the flow through.
I wouldn't, I don't think it'll diminish. I think it might increase over the next few weeks.
I agree. I agree. I think if we go.
Advertising the free, they might wait and, they'll hold off for two weeks, big making piles, but.
Yes.
Well, if you, if you're three times now, I mean, I think having the more days in a normal year might have doubled it, but I'll bet you'll triple it or more if.
That's my conclusion, based on what we've experienced for the last two weeks, basically. Since the virus thing came in, we've been busy, very, very busy. Kind of culminated on Saturday, the first nice, warm spring Saturday. We always see a big influx, but man. And this is not just for fire-free, you know, and yard debris, all of our traffic at all of our sites. We were backed out on Highway 97 down in Southwest. Our, at Knott Landfill, we get to the point where the line to go out, this is where our bottleneck is, processing transactions on the way out. So that line, people wanted to leave back to all the way up to the building. So we can't have anybody going in the building because people can't get out of the building. And from 1:00 until the end of the day, basically, one car pays, one car comes in. I mean, it moves not slow. So working on solutions for that as well, and we think we'll be able to handle that. This weekend will be, this Saturday will be an interesting day to see if those measures that we're putting in are, were successful. But it's a, we are struggling.
It's both the debris and the regular garbage, yeah.
Yes. I think what we're going to do is, instead of weighing, those vehicles that we know are minimum charge, you know, 400 pounds or less, we're going to take their payment on the inbound side and then divert them past the scales on the outbound side, and that will move a lot through. And I was kind of surprised, because in the building, the people are saying, they're seeing a lot more people with a bag or two, and they're looking for something to do.
Yeah.
They're going out to the landfill. I mean, when all that traffic.
Children at home, and they need to find something.
A $12 trip or entertainment.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with it.
I was out on Saturday, you know, and went over to the building, and I walked by a number of people that were waiting to get out, and I was apologizing for the wait, and they all said, "No problem, no problem. We knew it was going to be like this. This is the worst time of the year. This is the worst time of the day, you know. We're happy to be out, so."
Yeah. I sat in the bank line yesterday for about 20 minutes, you know, 15 cars back, but I could talk on the phone while I'm waiting, so it's fine. And another thing the bank's doing is they're actually, the one that I use, that they're actually have, when they get too long a line, they do the, they have somebody just going out to the cars, you know, kind of like Chick-fil-A. I mean, making orders or whatever they're doing. I think they're doing the same thing and directing traffic.
The yard was doing, they had people going down the line, you know, estimating load size and then writing that down and giving it, so that the guy who's conducting the transaction, he doesn't have to worry about how big the load is. He's just processing credit cards as fast as he can.
Sounds like Dutch Brothers.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, with that, I'll move Chair Signature of Document Number 2020-255, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for Yard Debris and Urban Wood Waste Management Services to Bar 7A Companies.
And I'll second that.
And any further discussion? I just want to say that this is another Redmond company stepping up for Deschutes County. So we're noticing a lot of Redmond today. So anything else? Commissioner, who made that wish? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Tim. So we're almost right on time, just a few minutes early. With our Public Health update today, I believe, Tom, everyone is going to just be calling in, correct?
Yeah, Commissioners, it looks like Captain Garrison and Council Coliani are here from the Sheriff's Office. I'm not sure if they're taking the place of the sheriff. They are. On the line, we also have Nahad from Public Health and Jill Johnson also to answer some questions for you. So it's, and Nathan, I believe, is also on the, on the call. So in what order is up to the board's pleasure.
Okay. Would you like to go first? That'd be fine. Why don't you, why don't you guys go first?
I think he was pointing to you, Paul, if you wanted to kind of provide a general update or if you had any opening or sort of summary comments to make.
The sheriff always talks for about 30 minutes.
You could have five minutes.
There you go.
I hate to disappoint.
Just kidding, Sheriff.
Much more, it'd be more like 30 seconds. No. We do not currently have any deputy that is quarantined. Our population within the jail is down to about 145 inmates. The Captain Schultz has worked diligently to ensure that our release criteria is being met, as well as who is lodged. Property crimes, obviously based on the severity of those. If there's an act in progress that we respond to, those are the nature of the things that we are actually taking people in on, and then they're evaluated based on past record as well as just a system of evaluating as to whether or not they should be held.
Did you say 134?
145.
45. And so that's roughly half of a normal population.
That's, that's correct.
So is there, is the whole concern preventing the inmates from getting COVID-19? Is that the primary driver of all this?
Absolutely. We've previously had issues with influenza, and obviously we are concerned that we would have the same type of an issue within the jail population if in fact it were to be introduced into the population of the inmates. And so there are steps that are being taken, that individuals' temperatures are taken immediately. The standard questions are asked of them if they're symptomatic. That's part of the evaluation process as well.
Have you, have you had occasion to do any of the testing or?
Of inmates?
Yes.
I believe there, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, I think we have had one or two. One was in relation to the case where the subject informed the Bend officers that he had COVID-19, and so obviously that was, that was looked into.
So I actually heard from Sheriff Nelson last night, because I was worried about PPE, and he emailed me at 8:00 last night and said that our glove supply is good, per Nathan, and that we have 14,000 masks currently, and we expect 20,000 to arrive in the next two weeks. So I know, you know, we keep hearing that we're short supplies, so those are healthy numbers to know that it's coming in.
That's correct, and we've previously anticipated these types of pandemics, and so Sergeant Garabee, as the emergency manager, has been very thoughtful in that, in evaluating our stockpile, and so he's taken steps to ensure that we have adequate supplies of those things.
For a deputy, is it a mask and gloves, or is it more than that?
Depends on what the situation is, the nature of the call. If it's a death investigation, medical call, we work in concert with our partners from Fire and EMS as to just what steps we will take. If they are automatically first on scene, they've been given instructions that they are to exercise employing all PPE before they make entry, and then obviously we work in concert with them once they arrive, just as to just what we are needed for.
So gowns and suits are available for deputies?
We have that as well.
Yeah, that was kind of a thought. Okay, thank you.
On the EMT calls, did the Sheriff's Office always respond to those with ambulance?
As a first responder, we do, and, you know, some of our peers around the state have chosen not to. At the, they've been urged not to buy the Fire and EMS folks just for precautionary means, but we do because we're in the field, we're not responding from a station, and that's typically why we would do that.
So that's your whole report, right?
That is it, in essence. So sorry, I failed to make the 30-minute timeline, so.
Well, I'll extend a little bit more.
Okay.
What about with regard to crime calls? I know I've read or heard about increase of domestic violence, child abuse. I heard a whole string of these the other day on some news source. What do you, what, is that true, that those are increasing, or?
They are of a higher nature right now. Obviously, we can basically look to when we've had pretty severe winters, when people are forced to be indoors with one another. They're not, they have no outlet, really. And so, if you will, cabin fever takes effect, and folks, their tempers become short, and then therefore some of those things get reported that typically would not, they resolve themselves, and so we are called. I wouldn't necessarily say we've had an uptick in the number of custodies that we are seeing as far as, but we are, that's predominantly the types of calls we are responding to, as well as our folks that are, have some mental health issues. We've seen an uptick in that, obviously, if some of them have, this is stressing them as well, and so we see more of an increase in those.
You, I mean, we're going to talk about later, I think, but the governor's press conference yesterday didn't seem like we were heading back to reopening everything very quickly. So do you expect this to increase, you know, week to week? I mean, is it a graph? If it was a graph, would it be, what are you kind of expecting, if you can expect anything? I don't.
I would anticipate that obviously it will, it will be an ebb and flow, that if it's not necessarily good news, we will probably see an increase in it. But if it's more of, if you will, light at the end of the tunnel, I think things will probably remain status quo as what we're seeing currently.
Thanks for explaining that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It looks like.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Carrie Coliani.
See the mask?
Commissioner, it's not on, no, right. I have some information I think you all would like to know. Three weeks ago, the sheriff created a COVID response team in the sheriff's office. We meet every morning at 9:30. We talk about, across the issues we've just discussed today, from mass gatherings, events, PPE, whatever, jail population, we discuss those every morning. We stay in contact with Eric and Dave Doyle on these things, and the communication is going very well. If there's anything you want to know from our team, jail population, Commissioners, again, whatever, we can get that information to you very quickly. Again, every morning at 9:30, we meet as a team.
So you're talking Saturday and Sunday?
No, just during the week. We have met on the weekends, we have, but now in a regular session format, it's every morning at 9:30.
Okay.
Right.
If that's helpful, I'm sorry.
No, it is helpful. It's, you know, it's just like seeing on the news that St. Charles is going to open up drive-in testing starting tomorrow, and, but you have to have a doctor's order in order to get your test. So, you know, the community that wants to get their tests will have to see a doctor in order to take care of that, and hopefully that's going to make a difference for our community. And then, you know, there's other testing. Hopefully next week, we'll have rapid and antibody testing in Deschutes County. So some other, another group's working on that.
Yeah, and I have shared, that brings up the excellent point. It's the flow of information that's so important on these issues, and whether that's the sheriff's office communicating with you Commissioners and with Mr. Doyle and Mr. Crop. Those things have to be in place, right? The pipeline needs to be there, and we've worked very hard and taken it very seriously.
I was kidding for Captain Garrison about the sheriff. He's attended some of our meetings, been really helpful, and I think we all, speaking for all of us, we've felt real able to communicate with him about what he's doing and the department's doing. I didn't specifically know about the 9:30 meeting, so that's great to hear about.
Right.
We need a further outlet.
Well, and respecting that incident management system we have, because it's, you know, public safety, and thank you very much for the services that are being provided by the sheriff's office, but, you know, the health, and then just the business of the county and citizens also. So incident management, kind of having that structure is very valuable right now. We're getting daily updates, you know, through the Health Department and kind of the incident management meetings each week also.
I think I did hear on the news that someone was going 108 miles an hour coming up 97. That was on the news, wasn't it? It was, oh, it was only three?
The city of Bend responded to that.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd heard about. Oh, okay, well, I'd heard about faster, what was it, a hundred and twenty-seven coming from over the San Yum Pass a couple of years ago, out by Blackview, so that wasn't quite as fast, but it was up there, so a hundred and three.
Might be one comment I'd make, I noticed yesterday, I heard this on the news or somewhere that people were driving faster, and I noticed it yesterday, I mean, everywhere, I happened to be out and doing a couple of things on county roads, and I noticed people driving faster, and I don't know if it's the fact that they're empty, or they're just wanting to burn some, burn off some energy, but.
Mr. Henderson, I've noticed the same thing, whether it's on ninety-seven or otherwise, I think maybe it's a multi-variable thing, they think there's less traffic so they can go faster, or that maybe they won't get pulled over because there are other challenges going on in the community, I think it's all those things.
Great, well, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Great to hear about those meetings, we appreciate that.
Yes, and again, it's soup to nuts, in fact, we stay in touch with our association, with Labor, so when we have those issues that obviously involve the association, we take care of those in those meetings as well, so it's a soup to nuts meeting, and Sheriff did a great job putting together the team.
Thank you. Okay, so that, you're taking care of, thank you, Eric. Happy birthday, Eric.
Thank you.
Yes, happy birthday.
Yes.
Born to be a bureaucrat.
April fifteenth.
Yeah.
Never come too soon, okay, so, are we going to hear from Nathan then, or did you represent Nathan too?
I believe Sergeant Garabee is on the line.
Okay, wonderful. Good morning, Nathan.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner Daire, and Commissioner Henderson and DeBonne, thanks for having us this morning.
Our pleasure.
If you'd like, I can just kind of give you an update, kind of a broad-based update regarding the incident management team, and thank you Captain Garrison and Carrie Coliani for the update from the sheriff's office. I am proud that our organization's been pretty proactive related to internal response to this incident, and really happy with all the things that they've got accomplished to take care of our staff and our community members. So with that, if you'd like, I could just kind of launch into my update.
That would be fine, thank you.
So I just kind of wanted to highlight, you know, kind of some of our main priorities, you know, continue to be providing that surveillance investigation monitoring of the suspect and confirmed cases within Deschutes County, that continues to be high priority, also supporting the logistical needs of the hospitals, clinics, first responders, and critical services, both logistically and with guidance. And I would like on a note that we're getting kind of some incidental, I should say, yeah, incidental information from a number of our partners, including the hospital, and some of our observations, that it appears that the supply chain related to, particularly with PPE, is starting to get a little bit better, that some of our normal providers that we've used in the past are starting to able to at least provide some degree of orders, it may not be the bulk or volume that we'd like, but that seems to be improving a little bit each week, so that is a hopeful sign. And then we are also vetting a number of vendors that have kind of jumped into the PPE business as of late, and signed up another, a few other additional vendors to kind of keep it our arsenal, so to speak, of being able to acquire, procure PPE as needed. You know, another, obviously, one of our main priorities is to continue to provide good situational awareness, to support good operational and policy decisions, and then also working really closely with St. Charles to support and assess the need for increased medical capacity, to manage surge, we, working with St. Charles, and then also adding a little degree of bump capacity even beyond St. Charles' capacity, if it's needed. We hope it's not needed, we're hopeful that it won't be needed, but we want to make sure we have the plans in place, and working with our partner facilities and identifying location, putting plans around how to operationalize an additional facility on top of what St. Charles has done. And I'll kind of get into the St. Charles update in a minute, and then some of our other priorities are really trying to continue to support the needs of vulnerable populations, including, you know, our functional access needs, our unhoused population, as well as long-term care facilities and other facilities that tend to have very congregate settings, and people with high risk. And then we've added a new priority in the last week, and that's to work with nonprofits and the business community, local governments, to support appropriate coordination of resources that aid in recovery. And then also, some of our priorities are in light of Governor Brown's press conference yesterday, recognizing that, you know, the reopening, quote-unquote reopening is not necessarily tomorrow or even next week, or, you know, we don't necessarily have a timeframe on that, and I can talk a little bit more about that in a second, but that we want to be able to make sure that locally we have the capacity to meet the prerequisites, so to speak, when that's appropriate. And then we're working real close with our finance department on looking at financial recovery for the county, as well as other qualifying nonprofits within the county, as well as other city and governmental organizations, to look at the financial recovery and relief programs, whether it's through FEMA or Health and Human Services and different funding mechanisms, to be able to recoup some of the costs that we've expended on response. So those are kind of our general priorities that we're really focusing on this week, obviously we have a number of objectives, and I didn't cover them all, but I wanted to kind of give you that information. And then, you know, we are, we did recently, in the last, within the last, since we last met with you, did convene a buying group, and these are folks that are experienced at buying medical supplies and PPE through some of our fire districts, and they're working together to look at vendors, determine who has the ability to supply our needs, who provides the best cost per unit, and delivery timelines that we need, and to make sure that the PPE and other supplies that we need are actually quality items, and not some of the other stuff that's kind of recently kind of flooded the market, so. Those guys, those, actually, I think they're all guys at this moment, but those teammates are working on getting all those vendors signed up if we need them to be, and then looking at what they have, so that's actually really exciting for me, because I was doing some of that work prior to that, and I frankly just didn't have the bandwidth, so. And then, you know, probably one of the challenges we have is, you know, we're all used to working using the incident management system, or the incident command system, but doing it virtually presents a significant number of challenges. We have about seventy people on our team scattered all over the county, and having all of our interactions by electronic or phone certainly presents a challenge, and in some cases does delay some of the operations, but I think in light of social and physical distancing, it's the responsible thing to do to keep our teammates healthy and able to continue to do the work that they're doing. I think, I'm sure you're up to date, but we are currently sitting at fifty-five cases in Deschutes County, and we've had, looks like as of yesterday, one thousand one hundred and thirteen negative tests, and we're sitting at thirty-one recovered. I would like to note that as far as I know, Deschutes and Lane Counties are the only two counties reporting recovered cases. I think that's probably also a function of the fact that we are still continuing to do very assertive contact tracing and follow-up with cases, to make sure that we are following those cases through to recovery, so I think that is certainly, and I know Jill is on the phone too, so, but I think that's certainly a laudable thing to mention, and certainly indicative of the hard work that Jill and her team have been doing.
Also, Nathan.
Some of the highlights?
Also.
Oh, go ahead.
Nathan, we asked for it, so, I can't believe other counties aren't asking for it, because, but I do notice, I was going to bring up, that on our report that comes out every day, it doesn't have the recovered, it doesn't have the ones that left, you know, that have left the hospital, which are both key things that people wonder, and those are really helpful to people's fears about this. I was surprised that, and then we also learned in our last meetings with Dr. Conway about how many people had been connected through tracing, which was a valuable number to learn also, that I haven't seen in public yet, but would be interesting to the public, so I think it's important that all counties be doing, I'm surprised that only two are, and I noticed that the governor yesterday, they seem to be behind where we are on that, so from a state perspective, I'm surprised they're not revealing that, or keeping track of it.
And one question, back to the buying group you mentioned, Nathan, is that our larger orders more responsive to the suppliers at this point in time, is that one of the concepts?
Yeah, some of the vendors are, have kind of minimum orders, because I think functionally they, in order for them to get the materials from the factories and import in the United States, they kind of need some minimum thresholds, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to purchase that minimum amount, but that combined, that they have to be able to account for that, so. But not all vendors are requiring that, and we did recently get signed up through Amazon also, Amazon is prioritizing hospitals and first responders and government agencies supporting healthcare response, so that's also another option that we're looking at as far, we just got signed up through their system the last few days, so. It's really kind of a hodgepodge of, and it's, it takes somebody that really can devote quite a bit of time to doing the research and determining which vendor we need to purchase from.
And then don't forget all the residents of our community that are making masks, it's been phenomenal, I really have to be thankful that people are stepping up and they are doing more than you could ever imagine. The really good news, Nathan, is that fifty-six percent of our cases, the fifty-five cases, have recovered, so fifty-six, over half of them have recovered now. If the numbers didn't change, we had zero in ICU yesterday, so that's really excellent news, people and their social distancing, masks, gloves, it's working, so, and washing your hands, so thank you.
Yeah, no, that is a great point, I do think that clearly the measures that our citizens and our community members have taken certainly have made a significant impact, and thank you Commissioner Daire, you've been a great proponent, and all the commissioners have been great proponents for the homemade masks, and certainly modeling that, and I think that's very important for our community members to see, so thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I just feel that they're an important part of the whole health network, if we didn't have people like that that really cared, it's amazing.
I think my wife's made over seventy now, seven-zero, yeah, so.
Well, I picked up.
Lots of people.
Yeah, sixty-five from my friend Kate and Barbara, who have really gone beyond the call of duty, so I know she's going to need to take a vacation when this is over.
Well, I think they switched from quilts to masks at the Lupine Senior Center too, and they're giving them out, so pretty exciting to see the production spinning up.
Yes, I know, it is, it's amazing, the talent in our community. So Nathan, did you have anything else you needed to add?
No, I was just going to give you a highlight, I know that you were pretty interested related to the hospital's preparations, and they've done a really phenomenal job in expanding their capability within the walls, so to speak, which is kind of a misnomer, because it includes a number of facilities that St. Charles Medical Group manages, but they are, as you mentioned earlier, so I'm not going to really go down that road too much, but they did recently increase their in-house testing capability, and they're doing a pilot drive-through, actually, I think that's starting today, so we've been coordinating with them and the city of Bend, and providing logistical resources to make sure that they're prepared to handle traffic and flow. And I would like to just note that those are only with a doctor's order, and they need to make an appointment, so if people are just showing up, that is going to potentially throw a wrench in the works, but there's a number of ways people can get orders, and I believe that they do not have to be a St. Charles Medical Group physician, they'll take orders from any physician, so. And then I just wanted to kind of highlight, St. Charles' capacity at their highest level of, they have a multiple-tiered response based on census and number of COVID patients that they're seeing, and their highest level of capability is to house over a thousand patients within their four hospitals, as well as some other sites within their campuses. And then we've done a lot of work in coordinating with identifying another ancillary facility that could potentially take up to another hundred patients, kind of in a lower acuity setting, if for some reason St. Charles is overwhelmed beyond their total capacity within their walls, so I think if you would call us like tier seven for them, so. With that, I'll, I think that's all I really needed to cover, I will say that we are, we're reviewing the statements made from the governor yesterday, and looking at what we can do locally to prepare for reopening, and be able to streamline and support the capacity needed to do that, and we'll be having those discussions within our team, and with our partners over the next several days, to make sure that we're aligned as communities within both Deschutes County, but also probably within the greater central Oregon region, to make sure that we can support that when we can. So with that, I think that's my update.
Thank you, Nathan.
I have a couple of questions, one is, I know you're also working on some possible housing options for people that want to be sequestered or isolated, medical providers that don't want to necessarily go home during their, you know, between shifts or whatever, have we come to any contracts at this point, I know there's been some discussions?
Yeah, we have, we have one hotel in contract to meet the needs of isolation needs for first responders and healthcare workers, if they can otherwise not safely self-isolate, and they're infected or suspected, at this point, we have not needed that, but we do have the provisions in place, and then we're working with our homeless leadership groups and our partner agencies around the unhoused populations to support expanded sheltering options there as well. You know, there are some logistical challenges to that, but we're working through that, I believe we have a follow-up meeting today to try to put a nail in that one and get that one wrapped up.
What does that look like? I mean, what do you, when you say wrapped up, what does that mean?
Well, at this point, our ultimate goal is to contract with a hotel or similar setting to provide that additional shelter space for certain folks, particularly folks that are potentially sick or need to be isolated, and otherwise, you know, a congregate setting wouldn't be ideal. Along those lines, we're also submitting a waiver to, a waiver request to FEMA to be able to recover some of those costs through the public assistance program, so typically non-congregate sheltering is not covered under the public assistance, but in light of the circumstances of this disaster, they are allowing us to apply for waivers so that we could potentially receive reimbursement for seventy-five percent of that, so we'll submit that waiver request and see if it gets approved.
Isn't our worming shelter, isn't tonight the last night of the worming shelter, Eric? Tomorrow morning at seven AM, so we've been having, what, forty-eight people consistently there every night, so.
I thought they had reduced the number to comply with the social distancing.
Did we?
Capability, that's what I was told, I'm not sure if that's true or not.
Okay, all right, well, I just know tonight is their last night there, and the homeless community was very happy to have it, so.
Nathan, another question I had is with regard to other medical providers, we've heard a lot from the hospital, they've, you know, done these virtual updates and press conferences, are other, I've never heard anything about what the other providers are doing with regard to testing, the numbers, you know, how much of the testing they're doing, et cetera, and do you know anything about that?
So the number I quoted earlier, I think is eleven hundred and, eleven hundred and thirteen negative tests and fifty-five positive, that's combined, and so that. That's combined. And so that is, Health Services gets that data from the statewide Epi system to track those tests. What I can say is a number of other providers are testing. They are opening, open, they are seeing patients. I don't want to necessarily name them because I know I'll undoubtedly leave some off, and that's not fair. But we are working, we have our clinic liaison is getting the list of clinics that are seeing potential COVID patients as well as doing testing. And we're going to get that information to the JIC and be able to provide that information to the public. Hopefully, what we'd like is kind of just a list of facilities that
I'm just surprised. I mean, we're five or six weeks into this. I would think that we'd know what all those other providers, I mean, it seems like the JIC would know all that, or they'd be connected kind of like you are with the hospital. Because some of them are pretty large, so, and have a big patient base. So I just never have heard anything. There's nothing in the press about it. There's nothing
I was
Well, I think, we've been in contact, we've been in contact with those clinics from the very beginning and having weekly calls with the clinics. It's been, they weren't necessarily ready for us to promote them to be testing. And so we wanted to be sensitive of their operational needs and have a number of sideline conversations with clinics so that we can safely, I don't know if promotes the right word, but essentially promote the clinics that are requesting to be promoted to the public.
Well, so out of 1,100 negatives and 55 positive, how many are other than the hospital?
Well, and so the other challenge over there is that's tri-county, so with the hospital. So I would say the hospital has probably done the majority of the testing. We believe that 967 of the negative tests are through the hospital system. But that includes residents from Crook and Jefferson Counties, and possibly even Harney County, or Lake County, or Northern Clamath County, or Wheeler County. But obviously, based on population, the vast majority of those are going to be Deschutes County residents. So of that, probably another 200 to maybe 300, 200-plus, 200 cases are probably done through the local clinic system.
So has there been, and you mentioned that there are possibility of another clinic. I mean, that's something we've talked about for almost a month, I think. And I was glad to hear the hospital was doing it. But are we working on a second one? Or when you say somebody is, or is it just the hospital again?
Well, you know, there's a couple, there's a couple of issues at hand. Is one, you know, and make sure I'm answering the right question. So the county setting up a standalone clinic is one, we have existing clinics that have the expertise and the ability to do it, and it's revenue to them. So we would want to be very mindful of that, of taking revenue away from private entities. But also, they have the experience, the knowledge, the provider to do the test. So these tests do require physician orders or provider orders. And so having it go through the normal clinic system is the preferred, and that tends to be the model you're seeing in most cases around the states. I can say that all of the clinics want to do more testing, but they've been limited in their supplies and their ability to do it, and then the backlog of the labs. So we do know that, like for example, and I'll just use them as an example, Mosaic has equipment to do rapid testing through Abbott, but they cannot get the test kits to do it because Abbott has prioritized the test kits for the system that Mosaic has. And I believe they have a number of them, I think probably at each of their clinics. But until they can get the test kits through Abbott, you know, that takes away that rapid testing capability that they would otherwise have until, you know, until that time comes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Yes, I was told by another provider in Deschutes County that they do also, they've been working with Abbott, and they are hoping with next week to have a supply to do 50 to 100 tests a week. And they're also, as, I don't know, Nathan, if you're aware, but there's been a lot of support to add back essential surgeries in our state. You know, they were called elective, and honestly, they're, in a lot of cases, they are essential. So hopefully, the governor is going to recognize the need to open up essential surgeries just to help people, you know, maintain their health as best they can at this time. So anyway, thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, absolutely. And Commissioner Adair, if you would, if you send me the email to that provider you were talking to on Abbott, I'll make sure that we get our clinic liaison tied in with them. So we're, we know what they are hoping to do, and we can support them any way we can. Thank you.
I will send that to you. I know, they just, you know, it's, the word is hoping for next week. But it sounded like they were in a pretty good spot.
Yeah, there's, yeah, no, and I think everybody's really hoping to, you know, we hope that in the, you know, not-so-distant future, it's not probably a light switch, but that slowly things just start getting a little bit better as far as supply of testing and PPE, and things will get a little bit more normal. And then that will provide us a little bit more capacity to actually look at relaxing some of the restrictions that are in place. So thank you very much. And if there aren't any more questions for me, I'm going to have to step off. I have another meeting coming up that I need to prepare for.
Great. No more questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan.
All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Well, remember, the Three Sisters were originally called Hope, Faith, and Charity. And maybe we need to consider those names again, because we do need a lot of hope here. So Nahad, are you on the line now?
Hi, I'm Commissioner.
Oh, good morning. What did he say?
You were a little bit quiet, yeah.
Can you speak up a bit, please?
Sorry. Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me now?
Better, thank you.
Okay, I'm actually speaking directly into the phone, so I can't really get closer than this. Am I loud enough?
That's better. That's much better. Thank you.
Wonderful. So Commissioner, I had asked for an opportunity to maybe, since this is my sort of first virtual appearance, I could maybe make an introductory statement. Is that okay with you?
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. It's less than 500 words. I hope it doesn't take too much of your time. But I do appreciate that you invited me to this public meeting. And as I mentioned, I'm grateful for a few minutes of your time for this introductory statement. So Commissioners, first and foremost, I really would like to acknowledge and thank Hillary Saracino, who has been in public service for 35 years, and most recently, in the position of Public Health Director for our department. And it goes without saying that I have some big shoes to fill, and I intend to build on Hillary's really remarkable legacy at the department and our community. Fortunately, she has agreed to stay on for a while longer and support the department and the community during these difficult times. And Commissioner, a few, perhaps a couple of observations about the response since I have come. Just to say that I am an optimist by nature. And although a part of me frankly has been quite worried about the impact of this pandemic in our country and our community, I really have no doubt that we will win this war and we will come out of it stronger. As you know, solidarity and social cohesion are the foundation of a successful response to any threat. And I remain optimistic because our community is not only resilient, but also has pulled together despite the physical restrictions. Our community members are stepping up without even being asked to help those in need. There are so many great stories of good Samaritans in our community caring for the elderly, single parents, and vulnerable groups. So me, my twins, whose birthday, by the way, is tomorrow, my wife, our dog, we're really proud to be part of the Deschutes County family and community. Commissioners, I also remain optimistic because of the strong political and technical leadership in our county during these uncertain times. I have always believed that science without leadership is unsustainable, and leadership without science is irresponsible. However, in our community, we have both. We have strong leaders in you, our public health and EOC, St. Charles, and many others making evidence-based decisions and policies. Also, Commissioners, as you know, public health doesn't happen overnight. Your decisions from last year and years before in strengthening the public and behavioral health infrastructures through general funds are paying dividends today, as our strong and well-trained workforce is working 24/7 to stay ahead of this virus. So for these reasons and more, I am optimistic that we will prevail as long as we stay the course. And thank you again for inviting me to this meeting and giving me this opportunity for this, to give this introductory statement. Over to you.
Oh, thank you very much. Is there any update that you have as far as, have you heard anything with the last day? Our last update was on the, yesterday, the 14th, I believe we received it last night, where we have the 55 cases and 31 have recovered. And the other amazing statistic is that only of those 55 cases, 19 of them were hospitalized. So, you know, we're dealing with some interesting times. When you read about people that have picked up the virus and they only went to the, what, to the market and put gas in their car, you kind of wonder how that happens to those individuals. But any enlightening for us today?
So Commissioner Adair, I think Nathan did a great job in providing the latest updates that we have available. In terms of any additional comments or input, since really yesterday, we don't have additional points to raise, I wasn't, I'm not hearing you very clearly, but I'm not sure if you were making a comment about how people are picking up the virus, or that was a question. So my apologies if I didn't hear you well. Was that a comment or a question?
No, it was just a comment. Someone had only, they had several, two children, I believe, in their family that had issues. The family was being so careful. And I believe the husband had gone and bought the groceries and put gas in his car and somehow picked up the virus. So when you see those kind of stories, it just reminds us all, you know, to be very careful.
Where did you see that?
That's a really good point, Commissioner. I'm glad you raised that, and I
Somewhere, my 42,000
It's a very good point.
Yeah, it was on, it was on, probably on my Twitter feed. So, yeah, I know. That's all he'd done was put gas in his car and go to the market, I believe.
Well, you know, Nahad, I still feel like one of the missing things that Commissioner Adair is bringing up is the fact that we really don't know who's getting it, how they're getting it, the exposures they're having, et cetera. I mean, that's an anecdotal story of one of 55, I guess. But it'd be nice to know how the other 54, what are the patterns or whatever. And I'm assuming at some point, you know, it's like, over time, we've realized that measles can be very infectious just for being in the same room, you know. And we said we had that outbreak last year, I think it was, on that. And we have other things, we know how we catch it, kind of. And it's still not very well described to the public. I mean, we're just being told not to do anything. Well, maybe some things are more risky than others. And, you know, I just think that's still a part of this, that, like we learned, that seven of the incidents that we, or cases that have been positive had come, we'd learned about them through tracing and connected them, which is, you know, one to another. But we don't know where, how, or whatever. So that's, you know, I'm still looking for some of that information rather than just
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, that's a great point and a question, Commissioner. As you know very well, we're getting new information and new data and better understanding of how this virus is behaving. And frankly, this virus behaves differently in different places. So even information from another country or even another state may or may not be super relevant. What we do know is that density does have a role to play in the way this virus is transmitted. And I think social distancing and your advocacy around that has really helped a great deal in that regard, of course, in our region and in the state overall. And as we understand the behavior of this virus better, certainly we will be communicating it. But for now, our understanding is, as been discussed throughout, through droplets, and this virus tends to stay alive basically in, on surface and other items that we come in contact with. So it's important to be always washing our hands and sneezing, obviously covering our mouth when sneezing or coughing, and all the other things that we have discussed in the past. But certainly, as more information becomes available, as we understand it, we will communicate them.
Well, thank you.
Well, thanks for your introductory statement. This is Commissioner DeBonne. And I know our Health Department, Dr. Conway's the director, and then it branches out into Behavioral Health and Public Health. So thank you very much for joining us, taking this leadership role in the Public Health Department. We have some great staff, you know, just doing the contact tracing over time for other infectious diseases and having some capacity is something that we can really, you know, build upon right now in this time of need. So thank you very much for joining us. And I want to say a special thank you to the whole Health Department at this point in time, taking a whole new role in our society. Because I remember a couple of years ago, it's like, hey, we need some more resources. We want to do good things out there. And there's, you know, issues that can be managed better. And now it's the rubber's hitting the road for the Health Department.
Oh, thank you so much for those kind words, Commissioner. Really, I'm sure our staff who are working 24/7, and they're so compassionate, and they care so much, when they hear these words, they're going to be motivated even more. So thank you. And I know that you as Commissioners know how hard our department is working, our staff are working. And I hope the public is also aware of how much we care about protecting everyone and taking care of everyone. So thank you for those words, Commissioner.
Sure. So a couple of the thoughts real quick. So I know there was an all-staff meeting scheduled and then canceled recently. So that was going to be a department. So if there's any, you know, virtual meetings or meetings to be attended to, I'd be available. And I'm sure all of us would be, just to kind of, you know, meet folks, say thank you. And however we can do that in the near future, it'd be appreciated. And then also kind of a specific thought, just to get more information, what's the status of restaurant inspections? I know we have a couple of folks doing a really great job out there, working real hard. Are those not happening at this time? Or are those still happening in preparation for coming back online? And you may
Virtual meeting, Commissioner, certainly I have noted that, and will make sure that all of you are aware of if and when it takes place. On the restaurant inspection, if you allow me, I'll discuss it with a team and come back to you with more information. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just, you know, I know that there's, you know, that's a regular schedule and a very busy activity, and it's very tangible for people to know that restaurants are being inspected. So there's two sides to it, you know. Is the staff doing that still, or have they been, you know, reassigned? And then I know that there's going to be a point in time where, you know, establishments, when they're coming back online. Because some are still open doing takeout, and other ones are just shut down. So just, yeah, a little bit of update on what's going on in that world.
Oh, I do have a question.
You're right. Our work has definitely been affected, and we've made adjustments. The specifics of it, I can definitely provide you either offline or during the next meeting.
That's fine. Thank you.
I do have a question regarding restaurants. If they are still open, are they supposed to be wearing gloves and masks when they're doing food preparation? Do you know the current rule?
Sorry, Commissioner, are you asking me?
Yes, I am. Do you
You very well.
Yes. Are restaurants, when they are preparing food in today's world, are they required to be wearing gloves and masks when they're preparing food for takeout?
Yeah, so what I do know is that we have shared the guidelines and all the precautionary steps that need to be taken with the clients, the restaurants, and our team would have more information on that to share with you if you're looking for more specifics, Commissioner.
I would. If you can let me know, that would be great. Thank you.
Certainly.
Please give our very, very best to Hillary and thank her for staying on. I knew she didn't really want to retire. She does such a great job, and thank you for...
Not a time to pick a retirement.
Yes. That was not a good time to pick your retirement. So anyway, but thank you for joining us today. Is Jill Johnson...
...inviting me. Appreciate it. If you don't have any, if there's no need for me to stay on, then I'll say goodbye at this point.
Yes, please, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Is Jill Johnson available?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Jill. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Yeah, can you hear me, Elka?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to thank Nathan and Nahad for their leadership. They did a great job. And also to call out other public health leadership that has really been exceptional during this period, Doctors Conway and Fawcett and Heather Keisner, who have provided so much expertise and support that has been really valuable and appreciated too by our team and has facilitated our ability to respond in a coordinated and highly capable manner to protect the health of our community. So they really do deserve recognition. Would you like me to give you an update?
Yes, that would be great.
Yes, that would be great. Okay. So looking back this morning, as you can imagine, it's been a very full few months for the Communicable Disease Team. We actually started working on COVID-19 response plans and pushing information to local providers way back on January 21st. So we started Incident Command internally in the Communicable Disease Program and under the leadership of Heather, and then we transitioned to the Investigation Branch under operations of the EOC, I guess about a month and a half ago now. Well, to date, our highly skilled team of nurses and public health professionals have investigated 56 confirmed cases of COVID-19, including contact tracing, and we have been able to go above and beyond the state recommendations to investigate every case and monitor close contacts of those cases for the 14-day period following exposure. We continue to have good capacity in the Advancements and Projections Division for case investigation. We have trained additional staff, including nurses from the Nurse Family Partnership, who are currently on standby to step in and assist with contact monitoring if we need them. Also, I would like to highlight that we continue to ensure long-term care facilities are implementing control measures to prevent transmission. You know, through our modernization work, we've done a lot of work with the long-term care facilities over the last couple of years on infection prevention. They know to contact us right away when residents are ill. This allows us to quickly respond to ensure infection prevention measures are in place and also to facilitate testing. Sometimes our investigations are complicated, and we definitely value our partnerships with providers and St. Charles. We do a lot of communication back and forth with our healthcare community. But we will continue to investigate each and every case, as well as monitor their close contacts to prevent further spread in the community. I did have a couple of clarifications. Nathan talked about the recovered category for patients and cases. That is required under the state investigative guidelines that we are entering and asking about when patients are recovered. It's just that, Lain and Deschutes, we have been able to keep up on that category on our own without state support. And a task force has been formed by OHA to follow up with cases in other counties, but so far, since our capacity is good, we are keeping up with that on our own. The other clarification I wanted to make is regarding testing. And we have been directing symptomatic contacts of cases to urgent cares and clinics that we've known about for quite some time that are testing. And it really is important that that testing is happening in our healthcare community because patients do need to be evaluated for symptoms, there does need to be an order and then follow-up of the test results with that patient. So anyway, we're glad to see that testing is extending in our community.
Jill, this is Commissioner Henderson. Can you give any more light to how many of the, how much of the testing is being done by clinics and providers other than the hospital?
I don't have those numbers specifically. I can, I, we do know that St. Charles has done the majority of the testing, but I can sure get those numbers for you. We have it broken out by labs, and so that would be easy to collect that data for you.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to know and maybe important to know because it's to the people in the community, we look at just, I think, at the healthcare community and so I, you know, it's broader than just St. Charles. And all the press and all the comments have been about what St. Charles is doing, and I'm real interested in what some of the other clinics and providers are doing or not doing. And I understand, I'm not really looking for names, I'm just looking for the question I, you know, asked, which was just what percentage or how much is going on with other providers? Because in a, if this ever happened again, I would work faster and harder to try to get other providers as involved as what seems like the hospital's been. So it's, yeah, I think it's really important to know kind of who's, how much is being done elsewhere. Sounds like you do have some communication, so...
Absolutely. I can get you those numbers today.
Thank you.
Jill, did you say there were 56 cases today?
Yes, we have a new, yes, there are 56.
Okay, so plus one from yesterday's report then. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Second question I have is with, you mentioned the long care facilities, and I had somebody ask me yesterday if the majority of our cases are in long care, long-term care facilities, because we're sure hearing stories around the country about that. Can you give us any information about the number of patients that might be in those facilities? And also, I'm not really sure how many long care facilities are in Deschutes County, for instance, in terms of what's, because I know there's adult foster home type settings that have three or four people maybe as residents, whereas, versus the larger ones. It just was, I'm glad we're doing a lot with them, and we were ahead of the curve, but I'd just like to know a little more about that.
Good question. We, I do know that we have 33 long-term care facilities. I don't have a total number or total population that are residing within those facilities. We might be able to pull that data together. To date, we have not had any positive COVID-19 cases in long-term care.
That's great.
I've heard that there's one.
No, not in any residence. We did have one case of a staff member but was not there during their ill period at all.
That was the one that the press, we learned it through the press...
We learned it through Oregon Live.
But then it was apparently corrected later or something that they, when they investigated it.
Okay. Well, that's excellent work then with the modernization that I know Deschutes County's been doing. We really, we want to keep our most vulnerable as protected as possible, and I try and talk to my mom quite a bit. She's in a facility in Umatilla County, and they're now no longer, they don't even get together for their meals. Now they're bringing their meals to their, in their personal apartments. So it's, you know, we, they're very, very concerned, and thank you for doing such a great job in our county.
Oh, thank you very much.
No other questions?
Okay. Thank you so much, Jill. Please keep up the great work. It is, it is so appreciated, the fact that you do so much tracing, and we really love to see the numbers for recovered. So really focus on that number, you know? If it's up 56 now, let's bring it up to 75.
And I guess, yeah, we can take a moment, acknowledge that, you know, getting that, keeping the contact tracing capacity, if we end up in more of a inclining surge event or whatever, you know, having that policy discussion about resources is going to be important. So just acknowledging that that could be a future state where, you know, we have our incident management, we've funded it extra for the incident, and then the Health Department staff is doing the contact tracing. So if we ever need to add that capacity temporarily, we'll have that discussion.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments that we need? Mr. Anderson, did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay, we're good? Okay, all right. Thank you to our entire healthcare team for all the hard work they're doing on a daily, on a minute-by-minute basis. Mr. Shemke? You're back on the, in the hot seat.
Part two. Once again, James Shemke, Director of the Department of Solid Waste. You guys had a discussion on Fire Free a few weeks ago. There's concerns about the virus situation and how an event like that might be perceived. Also, always a concern about wildfire prevention and the need to get fuels and have people create their defensive space. One of the options that was thrown out was possibly a month-long event, and the rationale there was that if we have 30 days instead of nine days, that we would spread the traffic out and we wouldn't have such large crowds. I think the discussion we've already had this morning, as well as my experience over the weekend, tells me that that objective will not be met with a month-long event. If we have a 30-day event, it's going to be 30 Saturdays in a row, and it'll be crazy. My report, I kind of make some discussion here about our assumptions and how we came up with costs, because that's what we've done, is provided a cost estimate for an expanded event. And again, number one, it could very well be that my estimates for grinding costs for materials is going to be low if indeed we have a month of Saturdays out there. I want to point out that if we clo, or if we take free yard debris for a month, that's a pretty significant impact to Deschutes Recycling, who normally gets a revenue source from incoming yard debris. We estimate that to be about $85,000. That's a typical spring month for them at their organics area. If we idle them for a full month, that frees up some manpower and equipment that we can use for, at our event, at not landfill. So that will help us out if indeed we want to go to a full-month event, ease the impact of them. It would not, they can't provide enough bodies that we need, but what they could provide will help offset that lack of revenue that they get if we compensate them for that assistance at the event.
Well, the other thing is that occurred to me that the, if what's going on right now continues for the next two weeks, they may make the $85,000 in the two weeks before that. You know what I'm saying? That...
As long as, as long as I don't have to do what I did last Saturday and tell them to make it free in order to get the traffic through the site. So that's a good point. And we recognize that if, if they're not taking material for a month, they will have less expense. Obviously, they don't have to grind a bunch of material, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a total offset. In other words, they have some fixed costs, you know, they have material on the ground that they still need to manage, so they won't, they won't stop incurring costs in organics, even though...
A point of clarification, you're saying if they don't, you know, take in the yard waste, so it's a different drop-off site. And I did experience that last year. It was kind of around at the edge of the landfill itself. It wasn't on the grinding site that normally happens.
Right. It's not possible to get all that traffic through the normal spot there for Deschutes Recycling. We need...
It's another whole footprint.
Huge area.
You think of it as not their operations at that point.
That's right. That's right.
Interesting, okay.
We, our cost estimates are kind of based on what we typically pay for contract labor. We use them, you know, to a certain extent all year round. I don't know, haven't explored the difficulty that we might have in finding sufficient bodies, or if we can find them, what we may have to pay them in order to get them to come. So just be aware of that. My cost estimates are based on our usual cost per body from an employment agency.
So you're talking about the temporary help labor at $58,000?
Yes.
That number, $58,617? Okay.
Yes.
Well, and then, then you also add in the Deschutes Recycling labor and equipment.
Right.
So that, both of those combined are replacing the Heart of Oregon, is that what you're saying?
Yes. You know, and even, I mean, the Heart of Oregon, we probably would have been shorthanded on a 30-day event, even if Heart of Oregon was available to us. You know, it just, you can do a lot in a nine-day window, you know? People working overtime and it's tough, but you can get through that. But when you talk about a 30-day event, now we're talking seven days a week, 10 hours a day, you know? You basically have to have two crews, unless, unless you want to pay 40 hours of overtime, you know? So you have somebody working Sunday through Wednesday and somebody working, you know, Thursday through Sunday in order to get that coverage. So it just multiplies, okay? We think we'll need 16 people from outside the county in order to do this safely.
So I don't know why Heart of Oregon stopped, if it was just over the health things, but isn't there a chance that if they're still an ongoing organization, that they could kind of gear up for one event like this or for a month? I mean, there's all these, you know, there's lots of kids out of school, I mean, all of them, lots of seniors and juniors, and the requirements for education are not very much during this period where they're doing distance learning. So I don't know if we've ever talked to Heart of Oregon, I don't know the details, but I'm, that was a good place for people to get a job or do that, and it seems like they have the experience. Maybe they could do a month-long project and do it with all the social distancing and everything else.
I, you know, the impression I have is that they have less youth available to them in the summertime when school is out. They kind of run with the school year to a certain extent. I think the, we lost their services because of the virus situation initially. And, and, you know, we pay, we pay for those youth, we also pay for supervisory staff for those youth. Three, there's three supervisors. Those three supervisors are available to us, and we will use them in whatever capacity we have, we can, but the vast majority of the people that we get from Fire Free are those youths, and for whatever reason, they're not available to us. But we've had that discussion.
But they're out there. I mean, they're all at home, doing nothing or playing on their video games. I have personal experience with this. I know how they spend their days. So other people I know do this, they're saying this comment, so it just seems like it might be an option, but...
Okay.
I know, my neighbor is only 14, and he called up and he, I said, "Well, do your parents want you to work?" And he goes, "Yes." So he is now on paint detail. Yeah, it's great, you know?
There's a lot of them.
So, yeah, I mean, it could very well be that we would have no problem finding sufficient bodies. We just haven't tested that market yet.
I know some of the youth in, are still working at Newport Market, and, you know, I see them there, and there's, yes, they're, they're there, they've got the job, they've got the, you know, the determination, and it's, it's really, you know, you have to... you know, you have to, you have to think, I go, "Your parents must be so proud of you." That's what I always tell them because they're very pleasant and very, very helpful. So, anyway.
So if you, if you look at the numbers, you see, you know, basically they have three columns there, you know, 2019, that's our actual costs. The middle column is with the extended, two extra days at the transfer stations and then the last column is the estimate that we had, which maybe is not so accurate, you know, but when I, when I put in the agenda request, this is the best information I had. So it looks like it's going to, at a minimum, it's going to double the cost of the site or the event. And Tom has mentioned to me a time or two that there may be financial assistance elsewhere for that, so I would encourage that if we're going to have that long event, we would consider some help in that regard.
Well, we, I know in, well, of course, the lottery, or is it, is it lottery or, there's some, we set some money aside in one of our two funds for forest, you know, fire management and that sort of thing. It was, I don't know if we've already spent that, but I remember doing it, it was like $40,000 or something. Is that one of the sources you're thinking about?
That was lottery, you're right. And we did spend it in this spring on, on grants, but I made no promises to Tim because as I pointed out...
Sounds like you did. Sounds like you did.
That was not my intent. As I pointed out, Commissioner Adair last week, you know, as you review these costs, these are costs that would have to be borne by solid waste operation barring a commissioner decision to somehow help out or offset or contribute towards the cost of Fire Free this may. It's certainly an unusual circumstance. In the past, we have asked Solid Waste to absorb the cost of, of, you know, the limited operation or the historical operation of Fire Free, both in the spring and fall, and it hasn't had a huge impact. This is certainly an order of magnitude much larger than that. So it would be to ask Solid Waste to, you know, cover that whole cost certainly takes a bite out of their bottom line for the year. So I just, as I expressed to Tim, you know, I think it's a legitimate question for discussion, but I made no guarantees that that would, that would be the outcome.
So I'd like to lean towards that expanded event. I could see the, you know, the transfer stations, the Southwest Transfer, Southern Deschutes. One weekend you're saying, "Oh, I missed it." And then if it's available the second weekend. But it sounds like, yeah, people are also taking that opportunity just to take care of business. And if it costs 10, 12, 15, $20, whatever the trailer loads, that's a cost of doing it. And then the message is you can do it for free at some point, but also please come, take care of it. You know, as a property owner myself, either I'm going to burn it and chip it on-site or do something or, and I've transferred, I brought a flatbed trailer to Bend last year and it was more hassle bringing it to, than just burning it. I should, you know, and I asked Ed that, "When you have room, just take a weekend and burn."
You can burn any locker.
I know. And, and, yeah, burning stopped.
Yes.
But I mean, if you think of it an annual cycle, you look for a fall weekend and a spring weekend as a property owner and you just, you really get some activity done. So yeah, expanded event for those transfer stations. And it's good that you've had the experience of what if it backs up out of the facility? So as I say, the message to property owners is it is an annual responsibility, there's an annual cycle to it, there's a, a marketing effort that is a free Fire Free weekend, but, I mean, we don't want to put the expectation is that, you know, "Don't worry about it. We'll always be able to take it for free." Because I know that after you have the big piles, then it starts to self-combust if you don't manage it well enough. And then there's a big pile of compost that can, can and needs to be sold. So there's a big system behind the whole process.
So the way we do it now is the, at the transfer stations, is it open between the weekends? So it's just the two weekends you can do it?
You don't actually...
But the landfill...
The landfill is, is two weekends and the week in between, so that's nine days. And then following that, historically, we've only had one weekend at the transfer stations, a Friday and a Saturday.
We've talked about...
At his request, we've kind of agreed that we would do...
We've already kind of gotten, we want to do at least the two weekends of the transfer. Then there's a question of in-between the two weeks and then do we want to expand from two weekends to... So there would be, another option would be a middle ground between, you know, two weekends of the week between at the landfill to a month, going to two, three weekends or four. You know, maybe we should plan for something like that so we don't have as much cost, but we've really expanded it out, double capacity or whatever. And because I think typically people do save up for that weekend, but I think what you're seeing these Saturdays, people aren't spending very much money on other things. I mean, they're not going out, they're not traveling, they're not... So I think a lot of people, you know, don't worry so much about paying the cost right now.
$15, $20 is not the issue.
Isn't really a... So maybe we should choose a middle ground and see.
So one of the, and I, I put out four scenarios here just for discussion purposes and, and I had that idea after I'd submitted this where, because I know that the Fire Free folks like to have about a month of promotion before the event starts. We wanted to give them that month and we said, "We're going to have free disposal from the 16th, which is a Saturday of May, until the 30th, which is a Sunday." So it adds one more weekend and the week in between at Not Landfill and I would probably match what we're doing there at the transfer stations as well. So...
See, I think you could move it back. You know, this is when people are doing it. It wouldn't, I think you could move it back and it wouldn't surprise, forward, I mean, towards the ninth of that week if you wanted and it wouldn't bother people at all because they'd say, you know, the, you know, press release would be, you know, "Because of this and this, we're doing this and, you know, oh, good, well, you know, we'll get out there earlier because it's a different..."
You don't need a full month of promotion.
No, definitely not.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't need it because...
People are starving.
I mean, immediately, I mean, I know myself, I thought, "Oh, well, what am I going to do with, you know, the time at home?" Spring cleaning, you know, in March as opposed to...
So there is, there is a, there is a definite desire to bring that, that fire fuel in before the fire season gets going. So earlier is better.
Is Ed on the phone?
Yes.
Yeah, I figured. So I would just advocate for having him say a piece or two about this, the history of what we do, why we do it and how to get the word out, just so he can remind us some of the basics.
Yes. I do believe that with the Forest Service cutting way back on what they're doing this year, what BLM is not doing this year, that we as county commissioners really do need to step up and I'm thrilled that our community is already going to the transfer station. I mean, that's like the best news ever. I didn't go last Saturday, so I didn't see it at COVID, you know, over at Fire Year, but I'll probably go this weekend so I can, I think it's, it's, it's up to us, the people that we really have to step up. Burning's no longer allowed. My husband's out there with his chainsaw now and he is doing great work. So I just, you know, we have to be, we have to be responsible, personally responsible, and we need to help our neighbors too. If you have neighbors and you see that they're older and they can't, you know, get their property cleaned up like they should, you know, help your neighbors. It's, you know, it's a great time.
Well, we do have Project Wildfire, which is community neighborhood associations at the table monthly. Of course, the last one was a teleconference. But we've got that distribution network for information and advocacy also. So Ed, is Ed available? You have some words, Ed?
Ed?
Hi, Commissioners. Ed Keith, Deschutes County Forest.
A little bit louder.
Can you talk a little louder, please, Ed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, just a little bit louder. Yeah, so Fire Free, as you probably know, is something that Deschutes County's been promoting for over 15 years as a way for residents to be prepared for fire season, creating that defensible space around their homes in advance of fire season. It's our way of promoting a prepared community. We do have several communities that are, that are planning events and are already starting to collect debris, so hoping to get the, you know, clear direction on where we're going to go with this today so that we can, we can distribute that information out to communities that are already starting to promote being prepared for fire season and really doing this work and getting that debris collected and ready to transfer it or bring into the transfer stations and, and the landfill. So a lot of homeowners work together on projects. They do things like rent dumpsters, they do curbside pickup, hire contractors. So there is quite a lot of planning at the community level that does take place throughout the county and a lot of our firewide communities, as well as other homeowner associations and, of course, individuals. As, as you've already mentioned and, and know, there's obviously going to be an increase in demand for this. You know, I, I think it's really significant to recognize that burning isn't an option this year, like it would be normally. Burning is open until typically the first week of June or so. And of course, burning ended early this year. It ended last Friday and I don't expect that that's going to be an option for the rest of the year, so it's increasingly important to offer residents a way to deal or dispose of this material in advance of fire season. It has been a relatively dry spring. Our snowpack is okay in the higher elevations, but lower down, it is drier. I do expect a, you know, significant fire season like we normally have here, at least normal or potentially above normal by July. So it is important that people still do this work and of course, recognizing that they can bring that material in at any time for a small fee or really be encouraged to bring it in during whatever Fire Free dates we do settle on.
So Ed, a question, if it's moved up from less than 30 days from, or whatever the date was proposed, is that, could that be dealt with? You know, do it earlier?
I think it can. We have pretty good media partners that help us get the word out. We have a good distribution network and contact list with these homeowners associations and, and firewise communities. So we are standing, ready to get the word out of whatever dates we do decide on today, whether it's sticking with the original dates or banning days in, in whatever way you decide. But we, we will be ready to get a press release out relatively shortly. I've already heard from multiple media partners wanting to help us get the word out, so I think we can, we can do that as long as we get...
Excellent.
I think we'd get good media coverage.
What was the...
The lead story.
Original date?
The 2nd of May would be the first free day at Not Landfill.
Was it what day?
It's only two weeks.
2nd of May.
Oh, I thought you said it was the 16th.
No, that's, that was an alternative.
Oh.
So if we wanted to give a full month for promotion, then we would push that until the 15th through the end of the month, basically.
I brought my calendar so that I could track.
Actually, I think, I think my cost said the 15th through the end of the month, but the 16th is a Saturday. Saturday, I would probably start it on the 16th and end it on Sunday, the 30th, if we were going to do that. I want to, I want to make a point. So, so the expanded event initially, at least when I proposed it, was a response to COVID concerns, right? Let's try and spread out the volume of people. That's obviously not, we're not going to realize that. So now we're talking about an expanded event to, to have more fire reduction efforts. I think we open ourselves up for criticism in, in expanding a very, very popular event. So now you've got more people jammed together for, you know, kind of in, in spite of COVID concerns. One of the, one of the options I have here is to, is to postpone. So if we waited until the end of May or the event was in June, let's say, might the COVID situation look much different then or not? I don't know that, but by, by waiting, at least you have that possibility that maybe, you know, that concern is less, the social distancing thing is eased a little bit and we don't have to worry so much about being criticized. I, I certainly, and it's just very frustrating for me, is that I have thousands of people wanting to come to the landfill. And then when they get there, then they complain because he's too close to me or he's not wearing his mask and I can't, I can't accomplish both goals. I can't get the, the social separation that is being suggested and as, and keep people off of 27th Street or Highway 97.
Well, I think you're going to have to just limit how many go through in a day. I mean, you're, but we're, people are already doing it. They're doing it at grocery stores, they're lining up outside, the Trader Joe's. I mean, everybody's already used to it and I think, I don't know, they aren't used to it at the landfill, so maybe we'll have to get people trained up about it, but, because we don't really know, but it's pretty, that, that, at least at the landfill, I don't know at the transfer station, if you use the same area you used last year, it's, you know, it's really long and so, but maybe you just have spacing between, in the past, there's always somebody pointing where to go next. So you just, you're kind of creating parking spaces in between everybody. But I think people are, I think it'd be a matter of publicity of that we're going to, it's longer, but we're only going to have so many slots a day. But another option, what about doing, you know, like the stores are doing where they're doing older people in, you know, for the first two hours in the morning or, you know, it's just something to break up the population of, so...
So...
I see the challenge, but I, people are getting used to it everywhere else. I mean, we're grocery stores.
There's, I think, one, one thing to wait in line to get into Costco. At, at the landfill, people are waiting in their vehicle and if their vehicles, since we have people on 27th Street in their vehicles waiting to get in, that's a totally different city. They're not so much worried to wait.
Well, I agree, but, but you're going to have to tell those people or, I, I think there's some way you're going to have to, you know...
Have to get them off of 27th Street somehow.
Maybe there's some way to...
That's a challenge.
Yeah, no, that's, that's amazing there far, out that far. So I guess that's what I'm saying is we're, figure out some way to, to, you know, do each day a certain pro...
Everybody can go to the Friere transfer station.
Yes, come to Friere because my station is very...
Well, you can even have an update system, like the ski, you know, the ski, the ski resort, you know, they have, there's a place where you can look. Well, no, I was thinking about how you can see what the weather is today. You can call. There, there's an online, maybe we could have an online deal so people would say...
And we're, we're working on that.
Something like that.
As we speak, a...
You've got three weeks.
A landfill cam, you know, that you can go to the Solid Waste website and you can see what's the lineup getting into the landfill, what's the lineup getting out of the landfill, what's the lineup over at recycling. That'll definitely help.
That might help, yeah.
And...
I'm, I've answered the phone more in the last two weeks than I have in 33 years in this career.
Wow.
Everybody asking, "Are you open?" And we've been telling them, you know, "We're, we're an essential service, days and hours won't change." And by the way, it is really busy out here. If you can come out here between 7:00 and 10:00 in the morning, you'll get through here a lot faster. So we're encouraging that.
I go to my bank at 8:00 in the morning now and it's...
And I still lean to, let's get the bang for the amount of dollars, but for the, the history of this and let's do it earlier. I don't see doing it later. I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but, and let's not give away the house. You know, people are willing to pay for it. Let's let a lot of people pay for it. Do it on the weekends, maybe expand it somehow. So we'll come up with whatever, you know, we all agree upon here that's generally going to work. But yeah, let's use it for that promotional fuel reduction effort and then remind people that, you know, if you're not ready for the free day, you can always bring it in. So I mean, there's a whole story there. And as I say, residents need to think about this. If they are a homeowner, they need to know that the needles are going to come back next year too. And, and a lot of people do know that, but not everybody. Some people, you know, it takes a couple of years when you buy a property in central Oregon to think about how much biomass is created on your front and back lawn every year, you know? It just is like that.
Well, I, I agree with what Commissioner Adair was saying about where the Forest Service and BLM aren't doing, you know, fire...
Yeah, it's important.
Because I think it's important to do it.
I think we as commissioners need to step up because there's...
We felt it, yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely a huge spot in Deschutes County, 80%, what is it, public lands that is not doing what they normally do. So, oh my gosh, homeowners, you need to step up and, and considering all that our county has done, I feel like having it from the 9th to the 30th is, you know, originally, I just wanted to have two weekends. I mean, I was just saying, we need to do more and the fact that we would have 35 groups and, you know, homeowner groups in our county, the more groups we can have, the more encouragement we can to those individual owners to be personally responsible, get that zero to five feet around your house, get that spotless, get rid of the bark around your house, you know? Everyone needs to know and...
Do a public service announcement.
Yes, public service.
Like there we go for the COVID...
Exactly.
I'm thinking, I mean, the logistics at the, we got to, I don't know that we want to open it up for 30 days. I mean, that's a huge event.
I'm talking nine to 30, that isn't 30 days, that's... I'm talking nine to 30, that isn't 30 days, that's.
So yeah, it'd be a starting on the 9th as a Saturday or 8th or whatever you start.
Mother's Day weekend, what a perfect thing, right?
Load balancing, it may be valuable to have fire-free weekends and let people bring it in during the week and pay, because that switches from the landfill property driving around and dropping it on the ground to Deschutes Recycling with their general operation. So I would advocate for weekends, fire-free weekends, like we've done in the past, being able to switch it on and switch it off two days at a time, a couple of weekends, you know? Is that, I mean.
It, it helps, it helps with regard to queuing. So the mass of people that we have, so right now, we're, we're in the middle of construction of Cell Eight. So that, that impedes the normal traffic flow like we had last year, you know? So we're looking at something else. Now, obviously on Saturdays and Sundays, the contractor's not working, we can utilize our full.
Because that's a lot longer path, too.
So that, that would help. Whether there's confusion over, you know, the fact that it's free on Saturday and Sunday, but not in the middle of the week, I don't know if that would be a problem or not. Certainly, Deschutes Recycling would be much happier if they knew that they were going to get some revenue. Obviously, people will wait, you know, some people will go in the midweek just to avoid the crowds, some people will wait for the free weekend.
So it gives you options.
I don't have a problem with that.
Some people are going to want that free.
If that's a.
Gonna worry about it.
However many weekends that is.
Yeah, maybe.
Think about our community today, though, honestly and truly. We work, so we would have to go on Saturday, but there are a lot of people that are not working right now and they might appreciate going during the week just because it's, it's something that's good for their home.
They absolutely would. I mean, people are, I, I, isn't your, aren't you up during the week too?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it really is one of the few things you can do. That's why they're all calling to see if you're open. It's like, oh, I'll go to the, you know, I'm a, people are, you know, being at home 24/7 is not too fun.
They've cleaned out.
We, I don't disagree.
We're not used to that as a society.
We're seeing that. People are coming to the landfill with a bag of garbage.
Yeah.
They're looking for something to do. They're not, they're not.
And paying a minimum fee.
Needing to get rid of their garbage, they're looking for something to do. So.
I've done it, I mean, with a smaller load like that, just because.
Oh, I have.
Kind of cleaning something up, you know, just like you're saying.
Because it'd sit there for a month if you didn't just get it out of here on this Saturday. I've done that.
Because I promised my husband.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, as I say, I'm starting to like the idea of doing the advocating, marketing, fire-free weekends, but you're also available to come in during the week. I think you're, you know, coming to the conclusion that, yeah, people do have that activity right now, but.
Well, what if we, I mean, we've really kind of talked about this a lot today. What if we came up with a tentative, you know, suggestion of we're going to move it back a week, but we're looking at doing, you know, I, I like the idea of at least three weekends, but we, I'm fine with four, but also thinks, give a little more thought to this midweek thing, because I, I'm still, I like the original idea, at least at the landfill, of opening it up during the weekdays between the two weekends. I don't know if I want a week, open it up for three weeks of, I haven't really thought through that yet, now that we've seen the costs and talked about the costs. Maybe we could find out if we really could get any reductions on any of the costs or have a little more, I, I don't know, what if we.
Is that two full weeks? It starts, if it starts on the 9th and we have.
No, it's three actually. If you start on the 9th, you've got the week of the, of the 11th, the 18th and the 25th.
Okay, so three weeks.
I did, I did a quick calculation on a, on a, the 15th or the 16th through, so one week less than what you're proposing, Phil. And that, and that brings the, the cost to about $200, $203,000. So it is significantly cheaper than a full month, a little bit more expensive than the original proposal, which is nine days at Knott and two weekends at transfer stations, but.
See, I just look at the, I don't really want to wait a month from today, you know? That just seems like people are already doing it and so a lot of people are going to miss that and.
And it's just going to get hotter and drier for.
I'd rather get it sooner. I don't, I don't know if you have to be the second, but I would at least start by the 9th, because it's, people are already doing this and now the sun's out, it's been out for, you know, a week here and.
Yeah.
People are going to want to be doing, and it's a good, it's, you know, in the public service side of this, it's a good positive thing to be doing it sooner rather than later, I think.
And I do want to mention, though, that farmers are allowed to burn. So those are the only people in Deschutes County that will be legally allowed to burn, just in case, you know, they've got to, I think, burn their orchard fields in between. So anyway, no, I, I like the 21 days. Originally, I just wanted to add a little more emphasis, remember, we've been talking about this for quite a few months, in January, we talked about it, just adding an extra weekend, but now considering everything else that has happened to our community and our world, I feel like it's, it's a win-win, you know? People pick up where other places have dropped off and, you know, you can, you get a lot accomplished and it is, it does make you feel better to get things cleaned up and know that, hey, you know, I've got, I've got a couple of week, I've got 21 days and I can really do a fabulous job.
I'm thinking about painting the fence and all these things that I usually put off as long as I can.
So.
So your proposal's the 21 days, starting the 9th and going to the 30th.
To the 30th.
So there'd be three full weeks and would that be true that all the transfer stations and the landfill?
I don't know. Tim's in charge of that. Is that, did you, did you, when you said full month, did you mean the transfer stations would be the full month too?
That's what was the routine proposed.
Okay, just so that we could spread out the, well, you knew you needed to hire teams, your two crews, you knew for three weeks, you know, people might be more willing to take a job, they know it's three weeks long.
It does, what are you seeing at the, at the transfer station, the same that you're seeing at the landfill now and up, upswinging them out of everything?
Yeah, again, Southwest.
Well, that's right.
Being, being backed up to 27th Street is scary enough, but being backed up on, on Highway 97, wow, that's a, that's a major. And, and when I learned that that was the case last Saturday, the first thing I did was look to see how much of that was yard debris versus garbage and the ratio is about normal, you know? So we're seeing just in general higher traffic, not focused necessarily on yard debris.
Well, I, I mean, I support doing something and expanding and doing it early. I don't know that I would, you know, buy, buy and pay for a full three weeks of fire-free the way I think of it on the weekends, you know, in support of Deschutes Recycling. If we switched three weekends to, you know, standard operations, that's, that's what I'd like to see. But I mean, if the board's going a different direction, it sounds like we're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars doing that.
We were, we already spent $156,000 last year on how we offered it, but I do believe this year is a, a very unique situation and as county commissioners, it's something we can do for our public to help them, help themselves.
Yeah, and we're not too far off here. I was just confirming, you know?
Yeah, I know. We're, I just, I've been like, I've been working on this for months, so it's, it's gotten bigger than I thought, but I do, I, I do believe that it's, it's critical. So do we have any kind of a motion? Or do we need, where are we going to get the money?
I just want to make sure we understand the board's direction. So that would be three weeks from the 9th to the 30th, free all the way through at Knott plus the transfer stations. Is that correct?
I mean, does, does all of that have to be decided today? I mean, is that a part of this that we, we're, you know, we're three weeks away from starting? I don't know if people schedule out, well, I'm going to do it the last week of May, am I going to do it the third week or the second week? I'm going to, and so I'm wondering if we're going to still need it, you know, if things kind of taper down as you go through. If, if what you're seeing now continues, maybe everybody will be cleaned out by the start of this and it won't be the, you know.
Could very well be that, that Saturdays will be fire-free no matter what, just because they, you know, in order to get all the people through. So it's almost, we're starting on Tony's approach already, last Saturday. I don't know what will happen this Saturday, we'll see. Obviously, Deschutes Recycling is working hard to be able to process more people through, so we might not have that backup. We're doing the same thing on the landfill side to get people through quicker, so. It's your, it's your guys' call.
You might want to hear from Ed again to see.
Okay.
What that means in terms of the marketing and the, the likelihood of generating what we're targeting for fuel.
Ed, did you want to make a comment, please?
Uh, so I think what I'm tracking is that we start a week later on the 9th, run through the 30th, including the transfer stations. If we've got that information today, we can start to get the word out to the media, so that, I, I think that, I would really like to come out of the, the meeting with the decision. That would be my number one objective, is to come out with a, the clear days that we're going to offer this, especially since we may be adjusting days, that's going to be important for communities that have already started to line up contractors. I, I know of several communities that are doing community-wide events to create debris piles and then hire contractors to transfer that stuff. And so having some certainty in adjusting those days would be, you know, highly desirable for making sure that those communities are up to speed and are able to transition whatever commitment they have with, with contractors and dumpsters they've rented and those.
Would there be any, I, I hear what Commissioner DeBonne's saying about the, you know, Deschutes Recycling is there and this does take away from their business for the time that this is open, really. Would there be any value to do, you know, put it out, we're going to do it through the 9th through the 24th and then look, as we get closer, we could say, well, we're going to expand, it looks like we're, you know, steady streams coming, let's, we need to spread it out or.
Two weeks, you're saying.
Well, do two full weeks and then spread it out if we, if we're still going strong on Saturdays, it looks like. I mean, I don't know how you estimate this.
That's, I mean, it could be, yeah, flurry of activity and then just taper it off. So three weekends is what you'd be, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
So we're actually adding another week. What's that? Vote yes?
Oh, yes. I mean, I don't have a, I have much less of a problem adding one more, you know, weekend and week between. And I, we've recognized that the transfer stations have been kind of underserved, especially South County for all these years, you know? And so I'm okay with whatever we do at Knott, we match at the transfer stations. But just adding one more week certainly lightens that burden. And I guess we always have that option to say, well, if it's still, you know, crazy, we can always extend further.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with that. I think I'd propose that as a middle ground, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I'm not opposed to it. I mean, I had different ideas, but that's fine. So three weekends, two full weeks, all open free the whole time, staffed however, knowing that we're going to spend money on this.
Okay, so if your, your department actually had to absorb the $156,000 in, in last year, you absorbed the whole thing. So what is, what is, would we do as commissioners then if anything's above that cost?
Well, I think we just need to, I don't know if we need to decide that today. I think we have various options.
We, okay, I just want to make sure.
No, I mean, don't we, I mean, what would be general fund, obviously, or.
Well, and then our.
Kind of like other.
Cycling relationship too. I mean, if we're stopping operations or whatever we're doing there.
In, in past years, when it's just been that nine days at Knott Landfill, that's, and I asked Deschutes Recycling, so they said last year in the month of April, here's what we had for revenue, and then in May, when you had your fire-free last year, here's what we had in revenue, and the difference was about $25,000, you know? Now that's, when I look at what came in at fire-free, that was like $85,000 worth of, you know, at $4 a cubic yard, but that just kind of goes to show how much more we get, you know, when it's free. But in the past, Deschutes Recycling has, has eaten that $25,000 hit. And if we're going to expand beyond that $25,000, I'm advocating that we reimburse them. I, I can't, I, they've gone above and beyond in my mind, eating the $25,000 normally, you know, so.
Do we have.
But I have a relationship, I mean, we pass money back and forth for other reasons, so it's a fairly simple thing to compensate them to a certain extent, whatever you guys might decide on.
And if we have, you know, organized contracts with, with professional operators bringing in truckloads, I mean, we could have a really high volume too, exponential step there possibly.
Yeah.
Is that going to really?
I guess, I guess.
How bad would that be, I guess?
I think that has happened every year, some subdivisions hire a contractor, you know, and put a box in and that's the way they deal with it. I don't know if I would expect that to increase dramatically this year. The ones who've been in that mode will stay in that mode.
And we've been doing it for 15 years, so they, yeah, it's not like we're doing it the first time.
Right.
Well, I know landscapers are already out there working really hard, because when I was driving around yesterday, I saw quite a few of them.
Well, the weather's just right for it, right?
Yeah, it's perfect weather, so, and it's going to be 70s, so, all right, so.
Three weekends, two full weeks.
Okay, well, it's way more than I originally prayed for, so I'm happy. I was like going, you know, just whatever we can do to help people as a positive reinforcement. So is there a motion then?
Well, so let's get clarity about the dollars then. So are we offering to reimburse from other funds past that hundred?
Well, I don't, I mean, solid waste may be having a banner year, so I don't know that things, we need to.
So the answer is maybe?
I think we need to talk to Tom about that and Tim and see. I know what his spreadsheet looks like, so.
Yeah.
So I think we should just talk about that, but I mean.
Okay, so don't give clarity on that right now.
Today, we could think about that, maybe there'd be a couple of different places.
Does that work for Tim and?
Well, yeah, I think Commissioner Henderson's right, we don't need to decide that today. I think it's good news that you've left the door open to, you know, help solid waste absorb the cost of an expanded fire-free this year, so we can bring that back, you know, later on, in terms of what your, your options might, might be there.
Okay.
Excellent.
Want to formalize a?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion that we set the fire-free event to start on May 9th and go through May 24th this year on, and include the weekdays as well as the weekends and include the transfer stations as well as the landfill.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I appreciate working through this and, and the amount of work you did to kind of figure out all this. We'll see how accurate it turns out. It's going to be interesting. It's just so, such an odd year.
And this is a call to the media partners too, because I mean, and Ed will be right on this, and I'm sure Project Wildfire will be excited to hear about it. Yeah, so this could be like that activity that's socially distancing, good for the community, fire, the whole deal, so could be a very exciting event.
We can actually tell them to wear their mask and gloves when they drive in.
Well, I actually agree with that, yeah. That would be an advisory.
And we could have it on our, we could do some billboards, you know, out, like, if you're coming to the transfer station, be sure you have your mask and gloves on. So positive reinforcement.
You could take down all the signs that say, say, stay home, save lives that are now being used. I mean, that message will be kind of, we've heard that for a month, so this would be one. Wear your mask and gloves.
At the transfer station, at the landfill.
Transfer station.
So Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair definitely votes yes. So thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Back up and ban go to Fryer.
Is a definite yes stronger than just a yes?
This is, I, it was a vision, it was a dream, so thank you, Tim, so much. And thank you, Ed. And I, I'm counting on your media. Public service announcements. Eric.
I'm going to take a quick.
Oh, okay.
What's our schedule now?
Now that we've messed.
Well, what were you thinking, Tom?
Well, as far as taking a lunch break, I think that's entirely up to you all. Well, as far as taking a lunch break, I think that's entirely up to you all. I suspect Captain Garrison and Carrie might be hanging around for the events discussion, which is next on
Next, and then we can take a break?
Yeah, we can certainly come back for the budget discussion and the executive sessions after a lunch break.
Excellent.
What about the short-term?
And short-term rentals, we can do before or after, we might, if you want to take a break before that, that's fine, but we might kind of put the captain on the spot and maybe ask him about how enforcement related to short-term rentals, maybe going before we turn them loose.
Lucky captain.
Huh?
Oh, he was
No, I'm just standing up.
We're going to let you go and then we'll
Short-term rentals?
Yes, I heard the most important thing one can be doing is getting exercise, so.
So, you know, Commissioner DeBonne is not here, we want to continue on?
No, let's wait for a minute. Sorry. Okay. Okay, so, should I stand up?
Yeah, it'll feel good.
See if I can still stand up? Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
No, every two hours, when you're driving with three boys, you know you have to stop and get them food, and then they'll go for another two hours, that was my role. So, Captain Garrison, did you see the public service announcement that we did with the sheriff?
No.
Oh, you've got to see it, it's Maximus, my foal that's a month old, is the feature with me. Yeah, he, he was a perfect little boy, and then his little ears go like that. He kind of, yeah, I, I knew I couldn't put the lead rubber on him very fast.
I think you're the only one that noticed the ears going like that.
I am sure I did.
I didn't notice that, I noticed the foal, but.
Did you notice his ears?
No, I didn't notice the ears.
He was like going, yes.
Sure it was.
Well, no, he kind of did a little thing, I knew I couldn't have the lead
Well, I was the only one that didn't have a pet.
Okay, here we are.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. I'm going to provide a, some background and overview of this issue. I'll talk about some options the board can, may want to consider, and one of those options is the recommendations from the Sheriff's Office, which will be presented by Captain Garrison. Last week, the board talked about special events, and just to clarify mainly for the public, this is different than the outdoor mass gatherings that the board already canceled, that was Four Peaks Music Festival. These, what we're talking about today is special events, there are, there are two main types of special events that come through the county's permit process. First category are the bike runs, are the bike rides, the runs, triathlons, and parades. These are events that impact the county right-of-way or use county roads, so a special event permit is, is required for those type of events. The second main category of events we're talking about today are events that occur on private property, but the property's land use does not allow for a commercial event or activity. So, through the event process, they're able to hold a commercial activity on their private property once every 90 days. And you'll see that some of the events that we permit through this process include weddings on, commercial weddings on private property. So, those are the two main categories of events that we're talking about today. There's also events that do not require an event permit, such as the Sisters Rodeo, the, even though that, the rodeo has been canceled for this year, the Sisters Rodeo has land use that allows that type of event, and they're designed to hold rodeos and events, so Sisters Rodeo does not require an event permit. So, there are events throughout the county that don't come through this process. The events, event applications come into administration, and they're approved administratively, they run through risk management, we send out the event application to different county departments and offices for review, the Sheriff's Office reviews it, our road department, our folks in environmental health look at, at the food plan and water plan to make sure that that's safe. So, we have a number of departments and offices that review the event permit, we also make sure that, that the event permit has insurance to cover the county, and then ultimately, I sign off on the event permit as the risk manager and approve those administratively. We receive about 45 to 55 event applications per year. Of course, we have more, more requests in the spring and summer and fall than we do in the, in the winter. I provided in the board packet the list of upcoming events, there are a total of 14 events on this list. Three have already been canceled or postponed, that includes the Ben Marathon and Half Marathon, the gravel grinder, and a side-by-side race. And then also on the list, there are three events listed at the bottom that are occurring in the city of La Pine. The city of La Pine has their own event process and, and permits those events, but because if, if the event impacts or uses a county road, they'll send us a copy of the event application for us to review, and then also, we'll make sure that we get the insurance requirements that protect the county for those events. So, the, the three events at the bottom will be processed by the city of La Pine, but we do have an involvement in that. In terms of options, option one is, is to maintain the status quo, to continue reviewing and approving events administratively, like we, we have been doing. Option two, and this is from the staff report, is to inform event organizers of Governor's Order and their requirements for social distancing at events. The Governor's Order specifically calls out events and says that there shall be no events unless social distancing is maintained. So, option two is just to make sure the event organizers are aware of their requirements under the Governor's Order, which so far, of all the ones, all the event organizers we've talked to are aware of, of that provision. Option three is to require event organizers to submit a social distancing plan as part of their event application, and that could be reviewed by staff, and as long as it's, it's compliant with the Governor's Order, we could move forward with issuing the event permit, but just add that requirement that they have to actually submit a social distancing plan for review. And then the Sheriff's Office has a recommendation to cancel events kind of on a rolling three-month period, and I'll have Captain Garrison explain that recommendation.
Paul Garrison, Captain with the Sheriff's Office. The, the purpose of that 90 days, with it being rolling forward each month, is to assess just what degree we currently are in with the executive order by the governor, as well as whatever order the commission puts in place as well. And so, what level of compliance would be needed to, in order to, to meet that, is the reason for the recommendation of that.
So, one of my thoughts is, a couple of thoughts, insurance liability, there's a whole world out there of, if somebody has an event and infectious disease propagates throughout, and I don't know if there's any analysis on that or not. And then health, you know, the guidance, like if we said, okay, you need to put a plan in place, who signs off on it, and I'm thinking our health department's going to say, well, this is good practice, that's a bad practice, you know, and that's different than public safety, which is just trying to implement, you know, kind of on-the-ground gatherings or whatever it is, you know, by the rules in place. So, I don't know, a couple just thoughts there.
The insurance requirement, the event organizer is required to purchase a policy and name, name the county as an additional insured and to hold us harmless.
Is there, yeah, so has anybody, and maybe Dave, if you're listening, is, is it infectious disease, I mean, yeah, during emergency declaration, I mean, there's, I don't know, I mean, maybe there's a hard yes and hard no here, there isn't much decision space for us, or, or, you know, does insurance even get near that?
Dave, do you have any comments on that?
I'd certainly recommend not holding your breath that commercial insurance policies are going to cover disease transfers or
Yeah, okay, so it's just not in
Yeah.
It's not covered under a policy, you wouldn't assume it would be, okay, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Well, I was at a meeting yesterday, and we were talking about, it was one of the Ed Co meetings for SLED, and they were talking about hotel insurance and our hotels, it will recover, I forget the name of it, but with regard to losses caused by, you know, people not going there, because as they were saying that they were, the lawyers on both sides were getting organized about that. So, I think, I think it'd be a big liability discussion among both sides that is, but if you're a plaintiff, if there's an outbreak, like I think, there's with some of these long-term care facilities, I think there will be lawyers looking at lawsuits, and then there'll be, but, one issue would be trying to get a bigger cap on that.
Well, and I don't want to, I don't think we're
Yeah.
We wouldn't real, I wouldn't assume to rely upon it, yeah, so I just hadn't, hadn't talked about that, yeah.
And the, and the other piece that I would just want you to be informed about is, obviously, we can't predict what this will impact us as far as our staffing goes, and so, to have an event that we may have to respond to with a diminished
Yeah.
Degree of, of personnel, when we have other calls for service that may be, I don't want to say of a more important degree, but obviously, life, death versus something that's operating outside the scope of, of the government order or, or the order put in place by the commission.
Yeah.
And then some of these that are in a recreational area that, that will impact our search and rescue personnel as well, I mean, we, we put out a public service announcement to them that please, obviously, if you're going to recreate in the, in these areas, obviously be safe and practical in how you do this, so that it doesn't draw upon those resources that may be needed somewhere else.
So, the other side of this, though, I mean, I, I can see how it would be easy to do something like 90 days. My, my problem with this is 90 days ago was January 15th. We'd never really even heard about the COVID virus 90 days ago, and what I'm seeing nation, or internationally is, you know, some of these places have been hotspots or not even hotspots anymore, and I, I just, I don't know that it's going to take 90 days to get to the point we can do anything. I just, I'm very skeptical that, I mean, we're, like, right now, with all of this discussion, we're down to four cases in a 270-bed hospital. Now, we're preparing for surging, but I don't know what's going to bring the surging, I mean, even New York, they're talking about things are going down, so I'm, I'm, I wouldn't want to do 90-day rolling on, at this, I was fine doing the, through June, because we needed to do, deal with some bigger events, but I guess I would be, I'd definitely be in support of number three, that if they're going to have events, they have to do a plan, but I don't, 90 days, I mean, that means by the end of May, we cancel everything in July, which is all the Fourth of July stuff.
No, it means in, on May 1st, if it's still an event in effect, we would cancel the fair then?
No.
Well, I mean, if you're
Well, yeah, yeah, we could, the first day of it, the second
May 1st, we, yeah.
So, that, yeah, and I was thinking of things like that, that there
I know it's
Fair doesn't require an event permit, I mean, there might be a, a policy decision.
Right, I know, but I mean, it just, it doesn't, it's not consistent if we're saying
Yeah, it seems like it would be consistent.
Yeah, don't you?
Yeah, so I, well, it's interesting to think about, but I, I'm just surprised that for all the discussion, we have four cases, hospitalizations, in a 200,000-person county after, you know, six weeks. And so, are we, six weeks is half of that period, so, two times what we've just been through, are we going to be at some level where we can't do anything in public? So, that's a, I don't know.
So, do you conclude that maybe having this rolling closure window is appropriate? Because I'm thinking from the, you know, an event operator, from, you know, participants, I mean, you just can't, you know, you can't plan for something, any of these things in less, I mean, 90 days from their point of view, but yeah, I mean, but do you, do you agree if a sliding window, I guess, is the starting point?
I kind of like that idea, I just think it'd be shorter.
Shorter.
Okay, yeah, so.
It'd be easier if we had a sliding window, but I, and I think a lot of the organizers are looking, I mean, they know their liability as well, so.
Yeah.
They're looking at whether, I mean, we've already had people come to us asking to not have events, so I, and we've had these ones have canceled voluntarily, right?
Correct, the three have canceled voluntarily or postponed their event, one of them will be this fall.
And we have the May 9th, the Mother's Day, at the Shilane Garden Market, it's still pending?
Yes.
Okay, so that's less than 30 days from today.
Correct.
And, yes, I do like the idea that they submit a plan. Number three.
Well, so, for an officer, public safety, somebody having to, basically, their job is to respond, whatever it is, you know, it could be health or anybody, you know, going to a home and having mom, dad, and the kids, you kind of can lay out the, but having to go to an event with 200 people all standing and walking around, just coming up to say hi, that's that awkward situation, because that could be the moment, I mean, I'm just trying to think through the scenarios here.
I think
So, that's, yeah, so that's what we're trying, you know, hey, let's stop that scenario. So, I get to the conclusion of putting a sliding window in, so we know that, you know, they're not happening until, so then the operators understand.
But it's just, just once a month, I mean, do we just on May 1st cancel things for a whole month, or do we do, is it sliding every day?
I think that's the idea, it kind of slides every day until the emergency order goes away, or whatever the trigger is, so you don't, we don't have to come back to it. So, it's, I mean, it's a good idea, because it'll
I don't think that's the proposal here, though, I think it's once a month, it says
That was initially what was suggested by
Is reviewing it once a month, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, maybe that was my extrapolation, what I think we should be doing here, but yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting.
See, Belgium is actually going back to school, I think next, shortly, that was
Well, other states are.
Yeah.
There's other states that are talking about going back to school, and I saw the governor of Florida was talking about all sorts of things opening up soon, so, I don't know.
Yes.
I just, I think this is, there's, the other health side of this is of what, you know, if the number of positive cases continues to drop or whatever, but the state has, says it's emergency, if they're the last ones to say that or something, I mean, we don't necessarily have to cancel things that are 60 days out or something, I don't know. I think the idea of doing the plan, switching gears, I like that, because it makes the organizers think about this a lot more than they would. I mean, I think there probably already are, most people, but it was make them, make them do that in their application, that would be good. So, when you came up with a once-a-month deal, that was the original idea, did you ever think about another, like a sliding day by day or week by week, so that?
I didn't, that was just the initial recommendation, and the reason being for that is I don't know what your, obviously, your schedules are. Usually, as Mr. Crop had, had mentioned, is there's so many days out that they're required to have these permits submitted to you by, and that was kind of the, the idea behind that.
Well, how many days out do they have to submit it by?
According to the code, it's 90 days in advance, but oftentimes, it's not that, they don't give us that much time, and we expedite it to try to assist the event organizers.
So, if we get to May 1st, and we say that we're, everything, and the emergency order is still in place, we say that, we would cancel everything through June, when we get to May 15th, would we, could we go to June, or July 15th, I mean, move it?
Rather than the first of each month, look at it from the 15th?
Yeah, because all of a sudden, you're, some months you have, some points in a month, you have 60 days closure, some months you have 90 days, or some days of the month you have 90 days, so it's, you know, there's that, it's like we've got a window, and that closes, and then we got, you know, it's a, I don't know, it just seems like it makes sense to kind of keep it consistent, so if it's 60 days out, or?
Or instead of looking at 60 days, just look at the months, that's a little bit easier, rather than counting days.
No, the reverse, I think it'd be easier to count the days, as of today, nothing 60 days from now, but otherwise, on May 1st, you'll have a 90-day window, by May 15th, you'll have a 75-day window, and then, you know what I'm saying, so, I think it'd be easier for, to, for people themselves even to look and say, well, you know, it's still in order, so our date is, so then when you get to July or know, it's still in order, so our date is, so then when you get to July or May 4th, I guess that would take out the July 4th event if it was, I don't know. What do you guys think about that?
Yes, May 4th could take out July 4th, couldn't it?
I'd like to hold on to July 4th for now.
Yes.
Me too.
I don't wanna, yeah.
Well, I know they're big events on that day and the parades and things and, particularly in the pine, those are great.
Well, as I say, um, the scenario, you know, is what we're talking about here, uh, community and, you know, the discussion of opening the economy at the governor's level and at the national level, uh, having operations at the landfill, you know, uh, a solid waste is a required operation, but now we're gonna advocate for a bunch of people to get in line and be, show up all in a period of time. We're all gonna have to figure out how to deal with this, is my point. I mean, this is gonna be a change in our society, a change in the flow of operations, standing in line to go to a grocery store. I haven't had to stand in a line yet, but I've seen them out there, so.
Yeah.
I did once for a few minutes.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, everyone is thinking about the world differently, how to go back to business, and actually Sheila Gould sent a really good analysis of what she could do for her business in order to make it meet social distancing and, um, you know, our, our community is thinking about it, so I, I hate to have 90 days. It's a changing.
Well, six, is 60 days too long. I mean, would you rather, would you rather be 45 days? I mean, we don't, like, like Eric said, we don't have to have a po, I mean, legally, we don't have to have a policy. We're trying to do it to protect people, but.
Correct.
In our thoughts with that also is, was, uh, the individuals that are submitting that application for the event, um, obviously it takes a lot of groundwork ahead of time to lay this, be it whether they bring in vendors, whatever, um, and they don't have to invest that much. If they know that it doesn't meet that timetable, then they're out of luck.
Yeah.
But, or to, to cancel people that may have, do, am I involved in this, am I not? Uh, that was one of the thoughts. I think some of the other things that you may want to consider is obviously our anticipated peak is either the 22nd, I think it's the 22nd through the 26th of April. You'll know more by then. Uh, that was one source, providing, uh, providing who you listen to as far as the source as to when the peak is going to occur.
I think the latest knowledge is we know how to control this by everybody staying at home, but if we, if we switch gears and people start intermixing, it can spike it at any time in a couple-day period, it can really start moving. So, yeah, we're, we're still in some unknowns, uh, there in our community also. Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't have good clarity on the direction here at this point in time. I mean, I, I guess I could get to the organized, required to submit a social distancing plan, required to, uh, submit, which means approval could be denied too. But you're saying, yeah, the resources and dealing with that is the downside.
Yeah, and we may not know. Uh, and we don't, we don't know.
Yeah. Well, and I'm thinking health department is, you know, cause if we come up with something and if, you know, if people are lined up, yeah, I'm thinking a road race, running race, everybody starts and ends kind of, but it's spread out during the event, so I mean, different kind of events have different interactions.
Don't forget, the LA Marathon ran March 8th. LA, they ran it. I mean, how did that event happen? And LA County really doesn't have any kind of numbers because they're really not, they don't live on top of one another. Most of the people are really, it's spread out, so that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's because we have a lack of knowledge of whether people are getting infected at mass gatherings versus living in old buildings with shared ventilation.
Right.
We don't really know, or having lots of intensive healthcare, I mean, it's just hard to know what really caused it, but there's a lot, it's remarkable that New York has almost as much as the next 10 big cities. I mean, how's that make sense? I mean, it's, this is stuff that, cause I don't think everybody else was spacing out at the, instead of, New York was all staying close together. They had, nobody had adopted those orders when New York started.
No, they said it was okay to go to the theater, remember all the things that their leaders said, so.
But weren't they going to the theater in LA then too, and other, other places that have, I mean, I don't know, but.
Well, they were, I know they ran the marathon, so.
Well, it looks like we have.
Did you get your guidance? No, sorry, we're all over the place.
Well, I mean, we have a couple that are coming up in May, so we do need to decide about, you know, if we're gonna have a policy, there's the beard, the Mother's Day at the garden market, and then the High Lakes Swap, uh, Swap Meet, High Lakes Car Club Swap Meet. And then the next ones roll are, are in June, you know, so they're almost two months away. We should think about it a little more, or, um, are you already in discussions with, have some of these, or have all of these already submitted their applications?
They're in various states. Some are just talking to us about submitting, other ones have, have submitted. We, I've been communicating with the event organizers, sending them emails to let them know of the board discussion.
That we may, we're discussing whether we would just make an, an order, you know?
Uh, every one of these, yeah, cause I kind of start to analyze when I look at this, you know? Mother's Day, it's at the garden market. I mean, if I walked in with a mask and I bought a basket of flowers for Mother's Day, I don't know that that's a bad situation. So, you know, that could be a casualty of putting this mass, you know, stoppage in place.
So, yeah, cause you can do that at, at other nurseries or open.
Yeah.
But I think there's an event part of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so they, yeah, they, they sell food or different things. So that, that event may change, but I don't, I still don't know that that has to stop or, you know, they could still be open and not call it an event and maybe have 300 people show up that day, you know?
For that event, it's, uh, basket making or flower basket making. They also plan to have, um, music, live music, food and drinks.
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to maybe just discuss this for a while longer and take it from there. And, and you can see how we're all struggling with it.
There, there are a lot of.
Yeah.
Unknowns and there are a lot of factors that need to be taken into account before you obviously make a decision on it. That is just the sheriff's office recommendation.
No, that's good. And, I mean, and it, it hits everybody differently, different timing, different realities of, you know, you go to the store now and some people are in masks and very focused and specific, other people are like, oh, whatever. So everybody's going through this at a different pace right now.
Definitely.
So should we bring it back next week?
May we?
After we've thought about it a little more?
It's, it's really the, the board's prerogative. I mean, we are getting closer to, you know, May 9th event.
Yes.
Well, then the May 16th is the next week, and that's a.
Okay, so we're a month away from the May 16th event, so really?
The May 9th event, the application is complete, I mean, in terms of the process, I haven't signed, I haven't signed, just came to my desk.
So they haven't canceled on their own at this point?
They have not.
Have they, have, and have they submitted anything for social distancing?
Uh, not yet.
A requirement.
Yeah, I, I'm good with proving that as a requirement right now.
See, that's where I was, I mean, if.
I'm willing to do that right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Closures, we, I may be willing to do, but I.
So the value of that would be running it through the health department, so, you know, because just like, as I say, I mentioned restaurant inspections earlier, but man, they know what to look for, and so that, that may be the interesting thing right now, how to set it up better if there's feedback and practice that.
Well, I remember that horse event, was it barrel racing?
Yes.
It's easier to stay six feet apart barrel racing than it is at a, at a garden, at the, you know, nursery, a garden market, I mean.
Well, and at some point, there's gonna be kind of the social liability or, you know, the media coverage or people are pointing, saying that wasn't right, and we wanna make sure we're not in that situation too.
So is there a motion then to, um, at least implement item number three today?
Commissioners?
Yep.
If, if I could, just procedurally, I think Dave might still be on the line. He had a draft order that addressed cancellation policy to simply require a, um, social distancing plan as part of an event. I'm not sure, Dave, if that would still require some kind of order or if we can just do that via a minutes order that the board would pass today and pass that on to Eric, you know, as a requirement that's fully valid.
I would recommend a board order that would, uh, call out that, uh, depending further action on how to deal with, uh, events that are permitted through the county, that, um, any of them, this point forward, uh, to the extent they may be allowed to proceed, um, at a minimum are gonna require, uh, this distancing plan to be submitted as part of their application packet.
So that's something that you could probably, uh, prepare and we could discuss this afternoon?
Uh, certainly. I, in fact, I just grabbed the order number from Sharon, so, uh, I could put something together here real quickly.
Okay. Great.
And those guys at the legal department should take care of business, real time.
Okay.
And then the board would like to bring this discussion back next week at the, the board meeting, just for clarification.
I know, because, you know, every day it changes and, um, you know, we've had a lot of models that have been thrown at us, and I know our constituents had, were, you know, 2 million people were gonna die, and then it's now it's down to 61,000, so.
In the middle, it was 250,000.
Yeah, 200, 100 to 240,000, so.
Yeah, and this, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, and the peak of New York City was gonna be, you know, all the ventilators in the world were needed, now they don't even use, you know.
It's actually not that good to use a ventilator and you don't, yeah, so.
And we can reach out to the event organizers immediately to, to let them know of the social distancing requirement plan.
Okay, great. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
So for people following, there, there's a board order being proposed for this afternoon. Would we go back into a, so we're gonna have executive sessions?
Yes.
Well, we're gonna have, uh, budget impacts too, we're gonna do after lunch.
We're gonna do the.
We'll do it on camera, I'm just saying a board order in the specifics.
Yeah, we have number 13 and 14 to do after lunch, so.
It'll be coming back.
Coming back at 1:30 then, is that?
Or did we want the, the sheriff's office have, maybe have some comments on the.
Oh, yes.
Short-term rental restrictions and enforcement of that? That's our next item, is that?
Yes, and then you can, you'll, then you'll be free for the rest of the day.
Um, we have not received that many complaints regarding that, uh, and the ones that we have investigated have, um, been within the structure of the order, so we've not had any blatant disregard for it at this time. I'm not to say that that won't come, but currently, that's, that's the status of where we.
Has anybody in the sheriff's office, like, just cruised through Eagle Crest just to see how active it is currently, or?
I, I couldn't tell you if a patrol deputy did that or not. They, I mean, in their, in their, in their constant patrol, they go wherever it takes them, so I couldn't actually speak to that, whether or not someone has. We've not, I'm not directing patrols to go do that. Um, they, you know, obviously were on the roads to enforce traffic and, and violations and respond to criminal calls, so what they're doing in addition to, if they're wandering through, and obviously it's very difficult to tell whether or not, is that a normally occupied home versus?
Mm-hmm.
Is it a short-term rental? We, we don't know.
Right, yeah. But if you saw cars at every house and three cars and four cars in the garages, you have a feel, I just was wondering how busy the resorts are as it is and, and I haven't heard many comments really.
Oh, I, I know they're busy at Black Butte, so, um, cause a lot of people have moved back to their second homes.
And that's some of the.
That is their second home.
Thing that we have seen in the contact with folks is they're absolutely, they're actually trying to limit their exposure in where their primary residences are, or they're separating themselves from a family member that may in fact be exposed. So we've had some of that.
Really?
Okay. Well, that's good to hear that we're doing education and, yes, it has been quieter this last week, so. Almost quieter. That's good, well, thank you very much.
Any other update on that?
Well, I think we were prepared to speak to you about it after the lunch break.
Oh, okay.
Like, Whitney is, was going to kinda share with you the types of requests for exemptions that we've been getting and how we've been interpreting those requests, just, we wanted to make sure basically that we're aligned with your thinking on how the, you know, the exception process and how the orders and being interpreted by staff, just to make sure we're, we're clear.
Okay, great. So we'll reconvene then at 1:30? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we're reconvening at 1:32 for our afternoon session. Thank you very much. Um, Whitney?
Hi, Whitney Hale, Director of Communication. We had, um, wanted to come back to the board and give an update on short-term rental, um, communication and kind of what we've put out into the community and the kinds of questions that we're getting back and just sort of touch base on, um, what we've done since the board, um, made the, put the second order into effect last week. So, um, we issued a press release when that happened and also stood up a new website that has an FAQ for folks to visit, and we've continued to update that as questions have come in. Um, we pushed the news release content and, um, the website information on social media, including the Nextdoor. We did a targeted, um, message to all of our unincorporated, uh, communities and, um, between the news release and the social media, um, we've reached about 20,000 people through those efforts. Um, we've also been coordinating with CDD and Finance. CDD, um, forwarded on the information to all of the destination resort contacts, um, and Finance has reached out individually to several property management companies, both by email and by phone. Um, I think overall, it seems like people are finding the information, um, and are getting up the bulk of their questions answered through the website that we've set up, and that's great. Um, as Tom mentioned before the break, we have gotten, um, requests for exemptions, um, and there is a specific FAQ on the website that outlines that process for folks, what they should do if they're seeking, um, an exemption to the order. And so, um, I was just gonna run through kind of generally the types of exemption requests that we're receiving and make sure that we're interpreting them correctly as the board would, um, want us to.
Can you, a couple things, so is it on our web, the county website, it's just one of the links as to?
It is, um, there's on the homepage on dishoots.org, there's a rotating banner image that says short-term rental updates, and that's the landing page. Um, I think the, the friendly URL is dishoots.org forward slash STR restrictions, so short-term rental restrictions, um, and those get into a page that has both orders linked on it as well as this FAQ, um, and some other information, so.
And, um, what did you, you said CDD had done what?
CDD forwarded the press release to all of the destination resort contacts that they have.
You mean the head of, like, the group that runs the resort?
That's my understanding, um, and they also asked or attempted to coordinate with Ed Keith to send to all of the Project Wildfire homeowners associations.
And then, but I thought at our meeting, we talked about there being several hundred, uh, rental groups or organizations that would serve here, and we had to get out to, doesn't sound like we've done that yet.
And I neglected to include that on the list, so we did send an email to all, um, of the registered, uh, vacation rental owners that we have within the finance system, that's just shy of 700 folks.
Oh, that's good.
That we sent a direct email to, providing them the link to that FAQ as well as contact information that's been coming back to admin if they needed follow-up.
How hard was that to do?
It was actually surprisingly easy, but IT kinda made it that way, so thank you to IT for.
Well, that's good, they did. I mean, that's what we wanted to, that's, I think it's hugely important to get it out and, you know, ahead of time, that's why we gave the extra days to do it too, so. And that's to all the owners of the rental, of the, of.
Property.
Properties that have been registered as.
Correct, with the county, yes.
700, interesting, okay. Okay, good, thanks.
Um, so I will go ahead and, um, just outline a few of the types of exemption requests we've received, um, just and the, um, how we've interpret, uh, interpreted the order and have been responding. Um, there have been a few requests from folks that are attempting to utilize short-term rentals but aren't local to the area, so they're not necessarily looking to come here on vacation, but they're not residents, um, of Dishoots County, and they maybe have circumstances at home that are leading them to be looking for another place to stay. An example might be there's a shelter in place or a quarantine in the area where they reside and they're looking to be in another place or. reside, and they're looking to be in another place, or perhaps they're having work done on a home that is not located in Dishoots County, it's located somewhere else, and they're looking for a place to stay while that work occurs, and so, for situations like that, you know, in a strict interpretation of the order, we've been communicating that if it's a stay less than 30 days, and it's not a resident of this location of Dishoots County, that that would not be permitted under the order, but we wanted to, that's one example that we wanted to touch base with the board on, and make sure that was consistent with your intent.
Wasn't that two examples?
Yeah.
They're different, though, aren't they?
They are, they are.
Ones are, it's a quarantine person in the area, so somebody in my neighborhood's quarantined, so I want to get out of the area, or is, it's not in the family, right? It's not like, Joe needs to stay here.
It might be, and this is not specific, I'm just giving a general example geographically, that maybe in the Bay Area, there's shelter in place going on, and so someone is saying, you know, I have a situation where it's hard for me to return home, because those are the, that's the set of situations that's in place where I'm, you know, a permanent resident.
Yeah, or, or an example might, it's the travel element that, in our minds, sort of changes things based on what we heard, in other words, if someone's, you know, they, they're, one of their family members might have symptoms, so they want to quarantine, they want to isolate, but instead of isolating, like, somewhere else in the Bay Area, they'd come here to isolate, and so we, as opposed to someone in your neighborhood, or.
Wants to stay at Sun River for the week.
Exactly, so, in our mind, that was allowable, so it's that travel element that kind of drew the bright line in between for us, and the same thing would happen if construction was going on.
Yeah, I agree with what you're doing.
Yeah.
I support that, and having that conversation, having somebody ask for an exception, putting it down on paper, is going to be the key to this, because then if somebody asks you, like, well, we had a conversation about it, and this is the choice we made, and this is a short period of time, and we need to be able to deal with that. You know, the key to this whole thing was that three-day recreational weekend by, you know, people that aren't family members, you know, a couple people, a couple groups of people showing up at one house, which is the scenario that we started with to oppose.
Another type of exemption request we've been receiving is, perhaps someone's coming to the area, they have a week booked at one house in Sun River, and then they have another week booked at another house, and a third week booked somewhere else, so if you were adding those weeks together, that would be a long, potentially a longer-term stay, but the individual reservations are.
Who does that?
Apparently, that does happen, and.
For what reason? Why would you move from Sun River to Eagle Crest?
Well, in some cases, I think these might be.
Play different golf courses.
But you can drive there, and you don't have to move all your stuff.
So.
I get what you're saying, I mean, but it seems like we're such a small area.
I've done it, and, you know.
People outlined that example, actually, and it wasn't so much going from one destination resort to another, it was like a Sun River house, then a hotel in Ben, then maybe some other, you know, a.
A second Sun River house.
Place, yeah, or, yeah, so, they actually described.
Tell them to stay all.
Gave us their itinerary, so if you add them all up, it's over 30 days, perhaps, and.
But the individual reservation is not, you know, and so that's kind of.
Well, and is that business-related?
No, it's not.
That's full vacation travel?
So because.
That's stretching it. But I mean, I, yeah.
I mean, I think that's not allowed under our ordinance, I mean, it doesn't make sense that they're better be, for the community, or because they've, they're staying in the area for a month, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know.
And that's consistent with how we interpreted it as well.
Yeah, I think you have to be consistent.
Okay. One of the exemptions that we have allowed are, we've received a couple requests for exemptions that are related to employment, there's been some construction examples, there's been some other examples that seem logical and not vacation-oriented, and so, to the extent that they are detailed and outlined in that way, we've been saying that that makes sense and is allowable under the order.
Do you find out where they work, or do we do any checking? I mean, because, you know, people that want to wreck, you know, come here to vacation, once they find the rule, then there are people that would say, well, yeah, I have to, I'm doing such and such, I have to work out of my off home, and I'm going to do that while I'm over there.
Yeah, one of the construction examples, actually, they forwarded a note from the supervisor who said, you know, this worker is essential for my job, that's beginning on X date and ending on X date, so I think people are trying to be detailed, but Tom.
Yeah, no, and the other thing, I'm not sure if you've used this yet, but if we get one that, you know, based on the, what they put in the email, in our belief meets the intent of the code, but, or the exemption, but there's no way to really verify it, we would put something to the effect that, well, based on what you said, you know, you should be okay, however, if there's a complaint.
Yeah.
And you get a visit from law enforcement, you may be subject to verification or something along those lines.
That's good, yeah.
And then.
Press, but verify?
Yes.
And then the last, sort of nuanced example that was raised was, sort of resorts that are located within Forest Service land, and so, sort of, if that would tend to be more of hotel motel-type reservation, or if it would, or if something like a cabin would be anything else, that's kind of one of the other.
What would be an example of that?
Well, there's, they're all over Elk Lake Resort, or East Lake, or Crane Prairie, they all, most of them have cabins, some of them have a lodge, or Saddle Lake has a lodge with, you know, rooms inside it, so, first of all, we don't, we're not certain that our order, your order applies on federal land, you know, that they have their own jurisdiction. It appears that they're trying, they've referenced our, your order in some information that they're drafting to put out, and shared that with us, so they're looking at it, but in terms of actual enforcement, it, you know, we're not sure, however, you know, this is kind of, sort of in a gray area, and whether you want to define them as a whole, or split out the lodge-based, which is maybe more hotel-type housing versus the cabins, which may or may not be, or maybe more like a standalone home, like a short-term rental.
There's, you know, neighbor, neighbor impact is the other starting point for this, so there's, they're not sitting in a residential area at all, so, I mean, there's pretty clear distinction right there.
Who?
The neighbor is the one that.
Oh, I thought you were talking neighbor impact entity.
No, we're thinking neighbor impact.
Yeah, yeah, I see how you.
There's no neighbor impact.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think you're right, I think that those would be different than what we, because everybody at Elk Lake, I don't think anybody lives there full-time, do they?
No, other than maybe the caretaker.
Yeah, but.
But the, it's that travel piece, it's again, they're traveling here, they're stopping at a store, maybe they're getting gas, then they're going to their place, and.
But we're not closing down hotels, so I think you're right, I think these are like hotels.
And therefore exempted.
Yeah, I think so, because that's the whole reason those places exist, is, the real thing that drove us, it's interesting, because the city's going to talk about this tonight, and I kind of wanted to reach out to them in terms of why we did it, was driven so much by residents complaining, saying, I live on the street, and these people are right here, and, and that's a, you know, that's why we didn't do the hotels, in a way, was there, that's my opinion, yeah.
Well, I talked to someone who worked at Saddle Lake, and, yes, you know, they have, like, rustic cabins and then other things, so.
And you agree that that should be exempted from the order?
Yeah.
So, those are kind of the, you know, generally the categories of the types of requests that we're getting, and obviously, the order's in place through May 15th, so that we'll plan to circle back with the board as that date gets closer, and touch in on, you know, what next steps might be regarding this, but we'll continue to keep updating the website and responding to folks as they have questions in the meantime.
Yes.
How are you getting the requests? Are they coming in from the rental agencies, or from people?
Both, we've had folks that own properties, and folks that are attempting, that have reservations that may be impacted, both types of folks are reaching out with questions, and I think, overall, it seems like people are just wanting to understand the nuance, because there is a lot of nuance there, and wanting to do the right thing, so that's much appreciated, and I would say, it's been primarily positive in terms of the communication we're having with folks.
Thank you, Whitney. Let us know if you get any very clever people.
Okay.
So, oh, thank you?
Commissioners, that is the order that Dave has drafted, related to the decision you made on events before lunch?
Okay, yes.
You can take that up whenever.
All right.
You would like to.
Are we taking this up?
Additional copies.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, everyone probably should get a copy of it, so that we can read it.
Oh, thanks, Eric, sorry, didn't mean to get in front of you there.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, small in it? So do you guys want to read it right now, or do you want to go ahead and have Greg?
When I ask them that. You've got some ones, too, good.
Okay, let's do the budget thing, and then we'll go back to this. Okay.
Commissioners, I'll kind of kick this off, there's, there's actually three pieces to this item that we wanted to make sure that we were covering the intent, so we, at the request of AOC, there was two requests from AOC that came in last Friday evening. One was a letter to Congress that, to our federal delegation, that described the impacts locally of coronavirus, so we shared a draft with you on Monday, so we're happy to go through that with you. The second request from AOC, and the second item, had to do a request from AOC staff asking for financial impacts associated with expenses in our response to coronavirus, as well as revenue loss, estimated revenue loss in a series of named categories. So Greg prepared, in working with the departments who kind of are associated with those revenue streams, prepared some estimates, and we shared those with you late Monday afternoon, we've not yet submitted them to AOC, because we wanted you to have a chance to review, ask questions, so we're prepared to do that, both, and Greg will lead that, and I think all the departments who are associated are also on the line that can also ask questions. And then, the final piece to that, I gathered you were, you know, the board may be wondering about what we are doing generally outside of the AOC requests, in terms of assessing and estimating impacts on us, and what that means for us longer term, so I'm prepared to speak to that as well.
Okay, great. So Greg, I noticed we've got somewhat significant number changes.
Oh, we do?
Well, um, 300, almost 400,000.
So what I just handed out was an update to the one you received a couple of days ago, is that right? So that's the one we want to look at, is the one you just gave us? That's the one I refer to. But, so, just, I was one of the people asked to look at this and really go through it, so what I view it as, it's great you've talked to departments, but I think we have our own impressions, too, of what might be going on out there, and what, you know, I listened to the governor's, you know, conference yesterday, and got the feedback about what, you know, what pace they're going to work at, and all these different things, so I think that's part of the thing, and then I wanted to understand it, and, and I also feel like we may give more detail, not just the assumptions, but, like, I think there should be a whole category of what, what we're talking about, who's impacted, like, you know, one of the, like, when you get down to revenues, you know, one of the things is lottery funds, well, who that really affects, what departments, what, you know, the difference. So that was my goal, was, we, I used to work for company that their philosophy is to have a second set of eyes, but have our view kind of put in this, too, so that was, that was why I brought, I wanted to go over it more systematically than just, here's some comments, but. Yeah, and actually, I took your comment on the interest in video, lottery funds, and, not video lottery funds, but lottery funds, and you'll see that listed here as one of the line items. Yeah. Just got some terrible feedback.
Maybe too hot?
Might be.
Sharon says, don't touch it.
Don't touch it, okay. So, before I go into the spreadsheet here, I thought I'd just give you an overview of what else we've been doing on the finance side concerning the whole pandemic. You've been familiar with the AOC, you've heard Nathan's updates, at least every commission meeting I've listened into, he's given an update. So the way the AOC is organized is, it's a conglomerate of, obviously, organizations, but there's several section, sections within the actual AOC organization, and one of those is finance, and so, Dishoots County Finance, we are operating as the chief of the finance section, and that's primarily me and James Wood, so, we're involved on, we, we have a morning check-in call every morning at 8:15, and he and I are both. I think it was my fault, because I touched it. So we've been involved on those morning phone calls, every morning, Monday through Friday, we're on a call, we give updates, and we get a chance to hear what's going on with the rest of the operation, so that's been interesting.
So you're providing the tabulated numbers that you have at that point, or?
We have, but mostly, we're there for support, and initially, what we've been doing is collecting, or creating a mechanism to collect costs over time, and that's been primarily in labor spent, and in materials, any other accumulated costs. The other thing we've been spending a lot of time doing is facilitating emergency contracts, and you've heard about the motel in town, who is providing lodging for first responders, and we were heavily involved in that as well. The other thing we're doing is, we're in the process of identifying and categorizing potential grant sources to actually help us pay for this, when it's all said and done. I think we have a list of five or so that we're tracking right now, we're also tracking federal legislation that could evolve into some sort of a funding mechanism. And then, when it all comes down, when this is all over, and I'm an optimist, I think at some point, this is going to be over, then we'll have to be able to take all of this information and sort it out, and share that with our partners, in terms of cost sharing. So, that's what we're doing behind the scenes on the AOC, I just thought I'd give you an update on that.
What was that last part, share with the partners?
Cost sharing, yeah, the partners that are, the organizations that are part of the AOC, we've agreed that we would end up sharing these costs, the net costs later, when, when it's all done. So right now, we're just acting as the venue to collect the costs, and then in the end, we'll actually sort those out after we're able to apply for grants, so.
But you'll also be able to submit for FEMA reimbursement using that same accounting.
Yep, exactly.
But this net cost agreement, who pays how much? How do you figure out?
That, that's yet to be determined, yeah, it's after we were able to claim the costs through FEMA, we believe we can get probably about 70% of these costs reimbursed through FEMA right now. Once that's said and done, we'll be able to sort out who funds the balance of those costs.
Did you say 70 or 75%?
I said 70.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
And does it really take, do you know, Greg, does it take, like, three years for FEMA to actually reimburse us, going through the system?
I don't know that, it's actually 75%.
It, it, we've requested reimbursement through FEMA on a number of things, it, for actual disaster response related to fires, it hasn't been that long, however, we've also had FEMA grants related to advanced fuels treatment on forests, and those have taken three-plus years to be reimbursed for.
Well, that's what I'd heard, so I just wanted to.
So you maybe differentiate between those two types of.
FEMA grants, three years.
So I guess that's the question, when you're saying you're collecting the costs, are we, are we paying the cost now, or is, are you, or is everybody, the school district, and the city, and everybody else?
So, the costs that are specific to a collaborative effort, so, if I can think of something here, like, some of our PR work, radio spots and things like that, that benefit everybody, those are being paid for through, the sheriff's actually has a funding code that we're actually collecting all those costs there, so, anything that's for the good of the AOC is being funded out of there. Other departments may be spending, health department may be spending funds on their own, city of Ben might be doing, spending some money on their own as well, but anything that's part of the AOC is funneling through the budget, through the funding codes in the sheriff's office.
But, but there is no AOC as an entity, it's something we created, so that, everybody that works there, like, this first line I may have is 500, half a million dollars, I assume that's our people? I assume that's our people?
It's our labor.
Yeah, so is there school district labor and city labor as part of these costs at the AOC?
No, these are just, these are, no, we're collecting everybody's labor costs, but these are just the county's labor costs here.
But what I'm saying is, those other entities are on top of this five hundred and sixty-three thousand, and so is it five hundred and sixty-three thousand for each of them too, or is it broken down and?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that.
What I'm going with this is if we're waiting three years for FEMA to pay something or whatever, I, you know, it seems like we should square stuff up temporarily, then reimburse tempor, you know, when FEMA not, we cover, if we're paying the mass of it, so I don't know how you're working, I guess that'd be a separate question, but, okay.
Yeah, and those are a lot of great detailed questions that we're actually working through on a daily basis.
But that would be the thing we would talk about, commissioners, about how that works too, so it's not just up to the department. So I would be interested in knowing sometime in the near future, who's racking up how much expenses on this? Because I don't have any sense really of how the AOC is, really, I don't have any sense of how it's managed or how it's paid for. So I don't know if the other commissioners do, I haven't heard that at a meeting.
Well, each one of these line items would have, it's rolled up, you know, it's, sub-items, so I mean, if there's a spreadsheet or something, that'd be interesting to share.
Commissioners, Sergeant Garabee is the commander at the AOC, so he would be the, I think, the best person to provide an overview of how that works, how it's set up, how FEMA reimbursements work, and answer any questions you have. We can certainly prompt him to be able to speak to that at your next meeting.
Well, or we could do it individually, I mean, but I doubt if he's keeping track of the dollars that the county's spending, so that would be here, that's what I'm, I just wanna see who's, who's spending what on this entity called AOC, and then how many, I don't really even know how many school district employees are involved, or how many city or fire department, or whatever they are.
An introduction to kind of incident management though too, because I mean, when forest fires happen, they set up the accounting right away, and people know that. Incident management understands the resources needed, the cost, and how it's being accounted for, so it's a point in time, you know, whenever you get their update. So there's a system in place, so I mean, Nathan would be able to explain that, with support.
Six months, six weeks or more into it, and I've never, I just been, I said, no, what we're accumulating, because it, that's all I'm, and who's, who's accumulating how much?
Are they still over at the basement in the school's building? No, that was just set up.
Virtual.
That's the JEC.
Oh, that's a JEC, that's right.
Yeah, they started there, and now I think they're probably virtual also.
They're all virtual, yeah, so that was just kind of for that moment in time.
Commissioner Henderson, I understand your question, and we'll flesh out some more details here.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, you bet. So just jumping into the spreadsheet here, first, this is just, these are our best estimates and guestimates that we have right now in time, and I can tell you that this will change tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, but we're staying on top of it, we're tracking this, we're paying attention to it. We don't have all of the details, and our estimate's moving into the future. Every day in front of us is a number that's less clear as we go, a couple of days out, we just don't know, but we're doing our best to make some good estimates of what the potential impact might be. So with that, we just talked about the first, the first set of lines there are increased expenses. We've estimated this year through the end of fiscal, this fiscal year, five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in county labor going towards AOC. And then that carrying over a couple of months into fiscal twenty-one.
So the obvious question to me on that is, are you saying that as of to, you know, let's see, we're in the April, so in May and June, you're expecting only twenty-five thousand, but in the first six weeks, we've spent five hundred and ten thousand, I mean, what?
No, the five sixty-three is the estimate through the end of the fiscal year, through the end of June.
Through June thirtieth?
Yep.
Oh, I get that, but I'm saying, but you say twenty-five thousand per month projected through year-end, so is that for the next two months?
Yes.
Per month, you're only doing twenty, see what I'm saying, you're only doing fifty thousand in the next two months, but you've spent five hundred thousand in the first six weeks.
There was more hours committed to this in the first couple of months, going back to January, yes.
Well, we didn't do much in January, we didn't have an incident command in January.
It started in January.
It did?
That's what Jill Johnson said today, that she actually started working on.
So the first three months, four months, we've spent, you're saying half a million, and we're gonna spend fifty thousand the last two.
Right.
And so my question was, why is it dropping so much, and then why, what assumptions did you make for the first two of?
So the assumption is, is that the average monthly hours converted to costs has been running at about twenty-five thousand dollars a month recently, so we're using that as a basis to project out into next fiscal year.
You see what I'm asking, is that the first four months, we spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand a month. And then you're saying the next four, we spent twenty-five, why is it dropping so much, or why has it dropped so much?
Well, I'm gonna, my thinking is that it didn't drop, it just stabilized. There was a significant amount of effort in the first few months to get this up and running, and then stabilized at about twenty-five thousand a month.
And how many people does that involve, when you say labor, how many people are we, part of that labor bill? These are county employees?
Mm-hmm, I can get that for you.
Wow, I'm not sure, Nathan, I think it was Nathan said this, there were seventy people involved with the AOC, but I'm not sure how many of those are county or not. Greg's saying that the numbers here are just related to the county staff, they're associated with the.
Twenty-five thousand won't cover very many employees for the county, it'll cover.
Wouldn't think so.
Per month, three, four, five, I mean, it's not, so anyway, more detail, I'd like that.
Supply line, we've estimated we're gonna spend two hundred and sixty-seven thousand through the end of the year, and then a little over a hundred thousand next fiscal year.
And is this us buying actual supplies, the personal protection equipment?
Yep, exactly.
And the ventilators.
Ventilators, yep. So the last line item there, the health services, materials and supplies, those have increased slightly, and according to Cheryl, those are dollars that are spent largely with additional costs with dispatching folks out of the office, people working remotely. Dropping down, any other questions on increased expenses? Dropping down to decreases in revenue, you'll see the estimate, the first line item lottery funds there, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars loss in lottery funds for the remainder of the year. We were just reviewing this again, I believe that that number will probably come down significantly because of the way the lottery funds are reported. The last report we get, the last payment we get for lottery funds will be sometime this month, it could be any day now, and it will be reflective of the previous quarter, which was, the exposure to a reduction in those funds was very limited. The first payment in July of next fiscal year will reflect the final quarter of this year, which I expect will be a significant reduction. So that two thirty-seven number will simply probably, when we look at this again, slide out to the twenty-one year. So there'd be very little, if any, impact this fiscal year, but a much bigger impact next fiscal year.
So looking at their lottery funds from this year, we estimated seven hundred and fifty thousand, so that's divided by four is what we're quarterly getting. So in a quarter, the most you could lose is whatever we get in that quarter, right?
Right.
So we could lose nearly everything for the July payment, and then we could lose some for the, so you're just saying move all that over, basically, not much loss in this, in twenty, but, but I think that would be one where if we're gonna send this off to somebody, we need a note explaining that, kinda like we do when we get TRT, we always get that note saying, well, this is cash, it only goes to the month before. But you think roughly three ninety-five would be the hit if this goes on for a couple of months into, into next year?
Well, it would assume that there would be no lottery funds generated in the first two months of next fiscal year, so July and August. Now, to the extent that we believe that's what's gonna happen, that would be a good estimate, if we think that it's gonna be impacted beyond that, then we should increase the estimate.
I think that lottery will come back before TRT, what I could do is drive down some, you know, if they open up, I think some of those stores have actually closed, or I know some have, the ones that, you know, that.
Well, the bars where they're, yep.
But I think they'll come back before TRT.
But they're still at these grocery stores.
Well, we were, we asked that at one of the meetings, what percent of our lottery funds come from the stuff at the grocery stores, or the.
And it was my understanding, all we got was video lottery, was that the, basically the ones you do in the bars, as opposed to the ticket that you buy.
We don't get, we don't get any more funds from that?
Where does that go?
Well, all kinds of different places, and more every year, the legislature, that's an easy tap into.
So one of the notes.
Borrowed against by the state legislature.
Okay.
They do, they do forty million dollar bonds or whatever at the time, and they borrow against.
But this would be a good one, where I would say if we're gonna, if we're preparing this document to send to senators, we would put more deep, you know, we'd explain that our last payment, just what you did to us, our last payment comes in April, that'll cover the first quarter, we don't expect much, our next payment's July, we think that'll all be wiped out, but that, then I think there should be a column saying, these funds are particularly important because we finance all of our EDCO stuff through there, and all of these nonprofits, and just, you can make a list or whatever, but I mean, that's a huge issue that senators would be responsive to, I think, they'd say, oh. So those are the kind of things, I think we should add another column that explains it in this document.
It's a good idea. Okay, moving on to room tax, we've talked about this a few times, but I'll just give you a quick overview. The one point three million dollar estimated revenue loss in FY twenty is based on the assumption that we will lose ninety percent of the TRT revenue that the county collects the last three months of the year, April, May and June. And twenty percent loss in FY twenty-one.
Now, this is one where, that we get, we always get that thing from, I think it's Judith's writer, yeah. So July's revenues are really June's revenues, and last, this year, that was nine hundred and seventy-three thousand. So we probably lose June, July, and I'll bet we lose part of August if they don't open this stuff up. So I think it'll be more than twenty percent of next year. Because those four, three months combined, or if you include June of, you know, this last June and July and August, it was four point two million, in just those three months.
And that could be true, the twenty percent estimate was based on conversations with some of the vacation rental folks, Eagle Crest, they were just giving us their general estimate at the time, which was a couple of weeks ago, of what they were thinking in terms of planning ahead.
So I just talked to somebody from, or was it, I mean, yesterday with somebody from one of the other resorts, and they, basically, their position, they'd written off the entire year, in a way, I mean, so I, I can't believe that if we don't open up fairly soon, that there'll be much tourism in August, I don't know, that's just my feeling, anybody else have a different thought?
Oh, gosh, I actually know people that are coming here now and renting forever, I mean, yeah.
In August?
No, because they, you know, our numbers look good compared to where, and people feel.
Oh, you think they're coming.
Thirty days.
Yeah, they're coming here.
Thirty day plus?
Yeah, I mean, I know people that are already doing that, yeah.
So you don't think our TRT will fall as much?
I honestly don't, because those are just kind of the conversations that I've been on the outside of, I mean, like.
That's why I was asking the sheriff about, has anybody just driven through the resorts, I mean, I, it'd be interesting to see who's there now, and what, are people really gonna come for the summer for, that's a lot of money to rent a house by the overnight rental.
Well.
Well, that's, that's a good question.
Some people I know, you know, the very wealthy are still probably very wealthy, and there still is a really good feeling about our community.
So you don't think, well, do you think this is too high then? It could be.
Well, it could be, I don't know, I was just kinda surprised about the things I've been hearing, so I've been absorbing that.
So we had a budget estimate, and we were gonna exceed it this year, transit room tax, and now it's gonna be below, and then, so next year's, yeah, I mean, the budget estimate will be our starting point.
We were running eleven percent above through the last month.
Twelve point six. No, the prior.
Eleven point six is the, eleven point three is the, I'm gonna start watching my numbers.
Yeah, watch it close.
Eleven point three is the difference between the budget, between the budget, it's eleven point three. But anyway, the point is, we're running high, and we probably run below the budget then.
Slightly.
Slightly, but not.
We were, we were collecting at a pace much higher than budget, and so this loss for this year will take us down below budget.
Yeah.
But not, not equated to the three months at ten percent level. I've made a note, I'm gonna circle back with some of the contacts I've made in the industry and just get a refreshed update from them, see what they're thinking now.
And we talked about this, as Tony knows, each month at the COVID meeting, you know, it's the big topic right now, how is each other doing, what do you think? I don't know if there's complete consensus, but, you know, some, some are more, you know, rosy and think that there's gonna be a lot of pent up demand, you know, once the stay at home is lifted and people are gonna just fan out, you know, in vacation land, and during the Great Recession, our tourism industry didn't really drop all that much, and the COVID's thinking at that time was that, you know, people that would otherwise go to, you know, Hawaii or Florida.
Or Italy.
Came to Central Oregon instead, so it kinda ratchets down, maybe the lower incomes didn't go anywhere, but there was a ratcheting down on expense, on spending related to.
But tourism wasn't part of the healthcare, it wasn't part of the problem back in that crisis, so it's, I mean, that's why people kept coming, is there, you know, we wanted people to keep coming, you were advertising, you know, the resorts were advertising, and COVID was at, now we're a different thing, where we've got the county saying no short-term rentals, the city, they're thinking of saying it about hotels tonight, I mean, that's, they've already, their message was pretty, I mean, I think they, we all need to be careful that we don't become an unpopular area by our attitude, and so.
That's a valid point, I was, in making that comment, I'm thinking beyond just the immediate medical aspect of the pandemic, it's the possible recession, you know, beyond that, that.
Well, yeah, plus even, I don't think that there's gonna be a day when, it's not like a war where there's a victory day. There's not gonna be a day when somebody says, all right, everybody go back to what you were doing in January one, I mean, it's not, at least that's, the governor was very clear that she wasn't gonna do it that way, I don't know what, you know, she was all, it was incremental, gradual, you know, so that'll be interesting. Well, it's a guess, it's a, so one thing there would be the, again, talking about who's impacted, so that's our, you know, a big chunk of that goes to the sheriff's department, but it's also to our, you know, our fair and expo, and then the, and the COVID, so those would be things to put in a nice, a good way, to again, going to the senators or whoever as to, these are things that have been hurt, and fair and expo, they, we're getting hurt a double whammy, really, that we're not getting this, you know, as much as this, plus we're being closed down, so anyway.
Good points, thank you. Recording fees, so this is information from the clerk, they have been, there are connections with the Mortgage Bankers Association, they're reporting a thirty percent decline in mortgage applications or even refinances, and they've simply taken that thirty percent reduction and calculated against some of their existing numbers that they were projecting, and that's where these numbers are coming from.
So that was the one that really changed from the original one on Monday?
But, so I've got the budget book, I was just seeing what we get, so it showed charges for services of one point four budget approved this, this year in the clerk's office, so is that, what other services? So is that, what other services are they charging for besides recording fees that we aren't stopping?
Marriage licenses and passports.
Passports are stopped.
I thought they were, they're stopped though, aren't they, passports?
Passports are, yeah.
Well, I've got the budget book, I was just seeing what we get, so it showed charges for services.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
That's you, uh, somebody's feedback on the, it's the delay in the video and somebody's phone line's open.
Don't answer yourself.
That was a very sharp.
We all talk to ourselves from time to time.
When you answer, you know you're in trouble, so.
Well, anyway, that, our budget book, it said we char, the budget was one point four.
It showed charges for services. Right, that's what I'm looking at.
So the, when, so thirty percent would be closer to half a million, so I was wondering how they came up with.
Thirty percent for the last three months.
Three months.
Oh, and then just three months.
I think we're okay.
Anyone who has their phone on and their audio on their computer, please turn one of them off, you're providing feedback to us.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Uh, the next line item is health services, billable services, and these are simply, uh, family support services, reproductive health, environmental health, those are the services that are simply not being provided right now due to the pandemic.
Or curtailed, right?
Or curtailed, yeah.
So, kind of related to the budget question, it's not to this document, what are those people doing if they're not providing services? The people that work in the department that are in charge of reproductive health, environmental, I mean, what do they?
I think Cheryl, are you on the line?
Or Dan.
Or Health?
Yep, um, good afternoon, Commissioner Cheryl Smallman, Health Services. So most of these are just curtailed services and they are opting to provide, um, services through telehealth. Um, but the number of services is what is, uh, still being challenged. So some of them are being redeployed, like in environmental health, we have one staff who's working at, at the EOC. Um, reproductive health is still trying to really launch the telehealth services um, and looking at ways that we could possibly reopen the clinic, which would certainly lessen the estimate you see there. And then family support services took, um, a big decline in services in the last two weeks of March. They've since been able to increase that and as we looked at the data for the last, for last week, um, we've seen that initially it was a decline of seventy-five percent of services, but now it's looking more like twenty-five percent. So we're still fluctuating and really trying to continue to provide services where we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Fair and Expo line, six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars this year. Ninety percent of that number is tied up almost evenly between events and food and beverage revenue. And just reflects the sudden stop of activity at the fair, at the fairgrounds.
So what, did you just not want to estimate anything in the next year or? You have question marks.
Yeah, well, that was, I think, the old version, I, there's a new version, I think, that has a hundred and forty thousand in there, is that?
No, the old version had a hundred and forty thousand, the one, the one we got on Monday says a hundred and forty thousand, so.
The new version has question marks.
Yes.
My last conversation with Jeff is, we just, we didn't know, we, we don't have enough, we don't know what's going on yet enough because everybody's been pushing out the, the events out until next year, but they haven't canceled yet, so we just don't know yet.
Well, I would think some of the July ones must be at risk.
Certainly they are and, you know, there, there's a whole separate question about the fair itself.
Self, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I fully anticipate there will be impacts and possibly uh, significant impacts, uh, through the first quarter, probably of fiscal twenty-one. Um, but we just don't know yet, as, as Greg mentioned, we know of, I know of at least a couple that have not canceled but have postponed to the fall. So it's a deferred revenue as opposed to lost revenue, but, I mean, any way you cut it, uh, Fair and Expo is, is, has been drastically negatively affected by, uh, pandemic and the loss of business. And that's one frankly that we are, you know, we are all hands on deck to try and get, uh, to get that plug, to get the bleeding stopped there, we are actively trying to move people out of that department. There's a, a conversation that's happening today where we believe we can slot all of the maintenance workers at all five underneath Martin at Fair and Expo into the road department to fill vacancies and to put on road crews where they're qualified to do that work. So, um, we hope that pans out and that's a enormous cost savings to the Fair and Expo department. There's a couple other, some people will, will need to keep there, will need to keep our marketing coordinator, basically to continue to line up business beyond the pandemic, some of these events scheduled multi-years out, uh, Jeff would be part of that as well. Um, we need at least one maintenance person, you know, to, to stay behind to basically, you know, uh, do light maintenance and fix anything that goes sideways, we can't just leave them, leave it completely empty, but um, and then, you know, a couple other, uh, individuals in the office that were, including food and beverage, that were looking to redeploy in some way within our organization where we keep them so they're able to plug back in when things get better, but also put them to productive work in the meantime. So that's, that's the active, um, course of action that we're going through, we are going through, right in the middle of right now with respect to the Fair and Expo budget.
But is the RV park really closed?
No.
No, so we still, so that, you have that under the assumptions and that really should be removed because it's.
The RV park is used for events sometimes too, so there's probably.
There's a reduction in revenue probably.
Yeah, there is a reduction, we've, they've, they've, uh, kind of Xed off every other space just to promote social distancing over there.
Good.
You know what?
They've also reserved, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I just drove by an RV park and I couldn't believe how close everything was together, so, um, yeah, they weren't doing that.
So they're, they're paying attention to that, they're also, um, working with the EOC for, to the extent that they have to quarantine first responders, if they have an RV, we'll put them in there. So they're kind of holding some spots in a, in a, uh, dedicated section, a blocked off section where they can, that the EOC would pay for, um, that, that we can also help out in that regard also, but it, it, still, revenue's down at the RV park, but it's not closed entirely.
Well, I think we should put something into fiscal year twenty-one, I mean, we gotta assume something, I don't know, a hundred and fifty or, you had a hundred and forty, I.
A hundred and forty, I think should probably go back there, don't you think? I don't.
We can put it back in and then as soon as we get a new number, we'll update it again.
Cause my guess would be even with the fair, even if we have it, there'll be some decrease maybe, unless things are really wide open again, there'll be, I think people are going to be more reluctant to do everything for a while. It doesn't matter what the government says, you get used to a habit and then you don't just jump right in and so I.
I don't think there's any question that you're right on that and it just seems completely implausible that we'd have the same kind of fair that we've had in past years. Um, Jeff has been working, uh, with both the Fair and Expo Board and the Fair Association to kind of line up some decision points and the Board of Commissioners needs to be plugged into that process, so uh, he and I talked yesterday about maybe some kind of a joint, joint meeting between the Commissioners, uh, the Fair and Expo Board and the Fair Association to have some frank discussions about what that might look like, as Patty pointed out, um, you know, last week, I think, some, at least some elements of the fair, we're gonna have to have the four H, the auction.
You have to have the auction.
Of course, but.
You have to have the four H kids.
You know, it could end up being the, the, uh, four H auction, uh, fair this year as opposed to, you know, the other elements certainly that, that have traditionally been part of that, but you know, I, I sense a little bit of, you know, a hundred years of tradition, as we all know, is, is a hard one, so uh, I think it'll be good to have the Commissioners part of that and, you know, everybody together so we can, you know, make that hard decision. There may be some hesitancy to be the one or the group to pull the trigger just based on the, you know, uh, centuries worth of tradition associated with the event, but, so that needs to happen sooner rather than later just because of the lead time involved in planning for and contracting for the different pieces to the fair.
Do you, what's your, what's the timeline on around May first, by May first or something?
Right thereabouts, within the next two or three weeks.
I think Jefferson County is doing it, the pandemic may for theirs, I, for their fair, and then what is it, the crooked of a roundup, that's their seventy-fifth and that's, I haven't heard that they're canceled yet, it's right, it's after Sisters, like a week or two after Sisters, so, they have not done anything yet.
Not heard, yeah.
Everybody's just hoping that things get better or something, but.
Yes.
Okay, well, I. So the last line item is community development and this one's kind of interesting because they had a banner day yesterday. They had ninety thousand dollars in revenue that came in. But there's obviously a bow with the fact that has to do with this pandemic and, uh, I just want to give you a couple of the notes that Sherry Pinner gave me, Sherry and Nick.
Nick's on the line too.
Nick's on the line. So, um, they gave, they gave me these estimates based on some conversations they've had with contractors and the Builders Association. And, um, as a result of that, they're estimating that they're going to have revenue decreases in all but two of their divisions related, uh, related to decreased in applications. So, uh, twenty-five percent decrease in building permits and an estimated fifty percent in land use. And they expect that to happen for the next six, six months roughly, so that's why you see that, you see that amount split over six months. So half of it in this fiscal year and half of it in next fiscal year.
Yeah. I think a lot of it depends on how bad, you know, things do get, I, Goldman Sachs did a report this morning, it was on Business News about that this will be worse than the oh eight, oh nine recession, that's hard to imagine.
Yep.
That's hard to imagine, I mean, that.
Much sharper.
And that would go on way past September if that was the case, I mean, that, that recession in the building world went on for years and, but even the drastic drop went for a full year, you know, then it took years to get everything back, so. I mean, that one, I would put some kind of note, you know, this is very, because there are, the people, if this again goes to Washington DC, they're hearing all the national news about Goldman Sachs is, you know, that's where minutia comes from, is Goldman Sachs, so they're gonna be listened to, I don't know. It's amazing. Yeah, the building is still continuing for now, but I know remodels have stopped a little bit because people don't want remo, people in their house, if they're living there, they don't want remodeling, so.
So again, this is a first blush at collecting all the pieces, I appreciate the comments on that, I'm gonna, we'll take and add those to this document before we send it off.
What about, uh, gas taxes? They're not in here.
Those, those will be down, but we did not include those.
I think it's huge.
They, they weren't asked for, but we certainly could include them.
We should.
You know, driving's down according to paper this morning, fifty percent, so, yeah, it's a huge number.
As you know, Chris has spent a lot of time looking at that and, uh, ODOT, we understand, is also looking at that very closely, so we're happy to include an analysis related to that as well.
Definitely gas tax.
It's on the list.
And it's, the, the price has gone down so much too, that's the other thing, which impacts the amount of tax revenue, so.
Both things, yeah.
Yeah, the unintended consequences, yes, the price and then it means you pay less in tax, so.
Exactly.
Anyway, doesn't it normally, it's in a percentage?
So this is gonna be packaged up with a cover letter, there was a draft letter that you had sent out and a version of this spreadsheet, is that the, the idea?
Yep, yep, exactly.
So, yeah, I didn't bring the letter, but, uh, I think we could edit it just a little bit, like the second or third paragraph kind of says something about as we or something referring to the.
As we move toward recovery.
Yeah, and I think as we is referring to AOC, but there's no other reference to it as you read it, so it could just be wordsmiths a little bit.
It'd be more as Deschutes County.
Yeah, something, yep.
Well, the other thing is, I would be emphasizing a lot of the things that, um, you'd better responded to, you know, than, like, I, I don't know how much they're gonna give us for County Fair and Expo because I, as I think I said in an email, I think that's a, seen as, well, that's a nice thing if you have it, but that's not the, but things like the lottery funds that go to all these, um, our service partners, United Way, Edco, I mean, there's, you know, I think, kind of highlighting it, be good, the other is whether, I mean, I know AOC's wanting, there are counties that are really, I know a lot of these Oregon counties in our calls have said, you know, they're very interested in having these resources from the federal government, particularly because we, nobody thinks we're gonna get anything for, from the state, the money that goes to the state that's supposed to go to the counties and cities doesn't look like it's gonna come here, cause they'll grab it, cause their shortfall is gonna be or the one that represents, over two billion dollars and they're only getting one point five, so.
One point six two?
But the.
That one? Are you talking?
Yeah, yeah, so.
But if five hundred thousand of that goes to like Portland, Multnomah and Washington County.
And then there's one point one left and, and what I've heard the estimates for the shortfall is gonna be two billion, so, but I guess I, we, are we? I'm, I don't know much, you're in this business of getting, looking for grants, I kind of look at this whole thing with federal legislation is just another grant in a way, is that how you're seeing it or?
Exactly, yep.
So the selling of it, I wonder if we should be more personalized to each senator rather than a big cover letter that just goes, I know this is the format that AOC gave us, but I don't know, I don't know much about what the senators are.
Well, particularly since, um, you all have a personal relationship with some of the senators, I think that's a great idea to split it up.
It needs to be, we, yeah, we can't just put Representative Walden at the very end, he is, he is our person and, and then if they did this, if you're gonna do it alphabetically, Blumenauer should go ahead of Bonamici, you know, but, yeah, I, I think definitely Congressman Walden needs a separate letter.
Well, and probably the two senators.
Right, and the two senators, yeah.
You know, and if you're, if you get a form letter, you feel different than if you get one that has your name on it, so.
Definitely.
Cause that'd be my thought about the letter.
And once we publish this, the numbers, I'm sure, uh, AOC or somebody's gonna kind of just tabulate thirty-six counties and then it gives you a scope of what's going on, so the letter is part of it to get some, you know, clarity in front of somebody for Deschutes County and then running all the numbers for the state.
Yeah, good point, yeah. Good. Well, it doesn't seem like solid waste is gonna go down, this fiscal year, from what Tim was saying.
Sounds like they're really busy.
Well, I, you know, not immediately, but, yeah, as, you know, uh, you know that, uh, solid waste volume is related to economic, um, success.
Yeah, well, once you've, once you've done your spring cleaning, if you're not generating it, then I do think it'll go down for that, for all the, like, there's no restaurants taking all their food waste, which was a big deal.
If home building is down, it's gonna.
If it goes down, it'll go down a lot, yeah.
So there is that possibility next.
Other just activities, you know, tourism generates a lot of waste, I mean, I'm sure. So it may go down by this, by the end of our fiscal year, I don't know.
Total volume, yeah.
What about, um, one of the things that gets hit by the decrease in the, the TRT is, I guess, the Sheriff's Office, we, don't we give them three million of the TRT, so that, would they be affected by? I mean, I know they're pretty good reserves right now or pretty good budget right now, but.
That's budget is a flat amount, it's not budget is a percent.
That, that will be a policy decision of you all, uh, come Budget Week, is whether you, uh, wanna preserve that uh, in the recommended budget going to you, as Greg said, it is flat. I had, you know, as I do every year, I had another conversation with the sheriff, just, uh, remind him of the understanding that, uh, this board, different boards set a number of years ago, uh, that the increase from two point six to three point three is an annual decision of the board. It was the two point six that was committed to long ago, uh, to fund Sheriff's Office, but anything above that is a discretionary decision each year, but we've, we've kept that same amount in there for next year, sheriff acknowledged it, he, he totally understands it. So, um, but that, again, and, and we'll know more come Budget Week on, on what just, or have a better idea of what our TRT is doing and. or have a better idea of what our TRT is doing and may do in the ensuing months. My sense is that even with the decrease, I don't think you're gonna be in a position of having to cut services. But we'll know more in two months or six weeks and, and that'll be, all be framed for you and the Budget Committee to decide.
We'll know in five weeks, probably. I mean, if this is only, if this is April 15th, we're probably gonna.
We'll know.
And we have a decision tomorrow, or a, a meeting tomorrow, as you all know, with the Budget Committee to talk about health services. And there's a couple additional items that we've put on that agenda. District Attorney, along with Victims Assistance is one. It was suggested that we also have a discussion with the Budget Committee on kind of what we're talking about now in terms of the coronavirus's effect on our various resident, revenue streams and budget, which we're, we're happy to do as well.
I think we have to make, I mean, if you're preparing a written document, we've got to figure out what our assumptions are for next year. I mean, we should talk about that tomorrow because the budgets work, I mean, like, I don't, like, when we hear today that the, you know, the Sheriff's Office, the jails, got half as many people in it.
Right, 140?
Does it take the same, does everything take the same amount of, I don't know, resources and?
Greg, you don't know off the top of your head, do you, the gas tax reduction? Okay, I kind of thought you.
Well, it's gotta be 50%, but we don't know.
Yes, 50% of what, so?
Yeah, if you, if you follow that logic, that math, yeah.
It's pretty, it's, it's gotta be huge.
Chris, are you on the line by chance?
He's probably at, um, some road project.
I'll get those numbers back to you, though.
Great, thank you so much.
Good, thanks.
All right, thanks for the input, I appreciate it.
So in terms of the letter, Whitney was, had a draft, so it sounded like you'd like us to incorporate these, kind of blend these two different asks into one letter, which we're happy to do. And, and we can, I think based on what we heard today and the numbers that Greg will update and will provide more detail, that we can put all that into a draft letter that we give to you individually. And, you know, in your sense of timing, we're probably not gonna meet again for a week until next.
I think we should get done this week.
Oh, yes.
I mean, I, we're, we're dragging it out as it is. It sounds like we want one letter that just goes to AOC saying, here's our, here's our spreadsheet. Use it how you're going to, and then we want our own letter going to our senators and congressmen, don't we? I mean, that's what I, that's what I would think would be the most effective.
So we could ship off the spreadsheet to AOC.
Once we get the notes done.
Yeah, and then, and then use that and incorporate it into a letter. So once we have a draft, we can just put it in your box and you can, you know, provide whatever, to Whitney, whatever changes you'd like to see. And then you, we can send it, you could bless it retroactively next week for.
Eric, you can circulate it between us.
He's gonna tell me I'm all wet, so.
No, that's great. I just wanted to let the board know that Phil Schor's had requested a copy of what is going to AOC and also maybe interested in just using that information as it may be helpful in conversations he's having at the state level. So if that's okay with the board, we'll share that information with him and also share any other asks that he may have in terms of communicating what the impact is here locally.
Glenn, I mentioned this to the Senator Finley's phone call the other morning and shared it today with some of the other committee, or he'll share it with the Commissioners that were on the phone call. So the format of that spreadsheet may get shared around the state a little bit, for the Commission.
Yeah, it'd be good if we gave a good template because we, a lot of the eastern Oregon counties have been asking, you know, they're working on something and we haven't done much help to it, the le, I haven't seen the letter they're working on.
Yeah, yeah.
This could be helpful because they don't have our kind of staff.
Yeah.
And the fact that, you know, we've really tried to think of all the different impacts. So, you know, they'll go, oh, gosh, I forgot about that, so I think that could be.
And I would say something in the letter about why we're writing, you know, why we're asking for it is really this thought, we don't think we're gonna get very much from their first bill because the shortages statewide are such that it doesn't seem likely. So we're, that way when we tell them that, some other way they, they hear it, so.
When the state revenue was 213 billion in 2018 and we're getting 1.62 billion, that really, what, accounts for what, a couple days?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've lost a lot, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Greg. Let's hope we get that Crooked River Roundup, right? Right for us.
Well, good, lunch recess.
Well, gosh, folks, and I have a Zoom call at 5, so, does anybody else have that call?
I don't think so.
I don't know what it is, I don't.
They asked me, the doc, to be on a call, so. It's for the Oregon State. Yeah, so, okay, so do we want to go over Dave's Public Health Emergency Order right now, 20, 20-23?
So I see all the whereas's and it just really gets down to a sentence or two, and item number two of the order, approved distancing.
There's a lot of whereas's.
Yeah. But it puts it in perspective why we're doing this. Eric, what kind of, what's your vision on a distancing plan? Or have you seen anything that, what, what are the requirement, required pieces be?
We would review the social distancing plan to see if it makes sense in terms of keeping people six feet away. There was one event that we saw, one that, it's, it's a delayed event, but it, it did not meet the requirement, the governor's requirement. It was pretty obvious from.
Would it be reviewed by, who, who would review it? I'm thinking, you know, is the health involved is really my goal.
Well, the board mentioned the Health Department, thought of reaching out to Environmental Health, that might be a good group to review it. You know, our public health folks could also do it, but they're so busy with the other response, the COVID response, that I was gonna go to Environmental Health.
Well, because this could be that, that area where somebody's motivated to try to do something, you know, have an event that they've had in the past or something they were planning on doing. And laying out, well, does this make sense, does this make sense, you know? So from the operator's point of view to environmental health, public safety, you know, approval. And this could be that area of ideas that starts to evolve for what does it mean to have a new economy in this environment? You know, if this, if there's no vaccine and there's gonna be a threat of this for X amount of time, whatever that is, this could be a positive environment for discussion too.
The other thing is we're seeing, we're seeing social distancing plans throughout the community and businesses. When you go to the grocery store or any business, business.
Glass wall here or there, yep.
Seeing the X's and the, you know, lining up at the Costco and Target.
Yeah.
Home Depot.
Ritter Jaws.
Sneak guard above the salad bar. Oh, no, that was a long time ago, yeah.
A lot of things.
Yeah.
I wonder if that should be one of the whereas's, whereas the concept of social distancing has become a common term and understanding of the, of people.
Well, this is the next thing, how do you define it for an event? So it was pointed out that this events may bring in people from outside the area. Like sporting events could, could be attractive to people.
They are.
Anywhere in the country or the world, right? So then there, you know, there's kind of, that's the ying and the yang of it. If, if an event's happening, it may be promoting distance travel, yeah.
I think they absolutely do.
That's correct. When you look at that list, it's a mix of, of local events and also events that bring in a wider, wider group. If you look at Pacific Crest, people come from California, Idaho, Washington, as well as locally, and Oregon and in central Oregon.
From our discussion earlier, though, this is, this is a step, you know, I do support this step. It may not be the final thing, it's an emergency order, it's gonna be in place with review 30 days from now. It talks about a review over 30 days.
It says actually will be in effect until May 31st.
Yep.
The last line, so.
With, and also another statement saying reviews, yeah.
So I'll move approval of order number 2020, day 023, Public Health Emergency Order mandating an approved distancing plan for all county permitted events through May 31st, 2020.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so thank you, Eric.
Thank you, and thank you, Dave, for putting that together so quickly.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Certainly.
You do it.
Okay, so now. Now we need to go into, oh, do we need any other further business in our regular meeting? Are there any announcements?
Oh, I had a couple other items, let me see what they were.
I could, I could make one little announcement.
Yeah.
From the Sisters Vision Implementation Team, we had voting yesterday on who's gonna be responsible for certain things. And Nick and I were a part of that team making these decisions. And the county is going to be responsible for disaster preparedness and response. That was one that we had a lot of support. And we're going to join the City of Sisters regarding fire drought, resistant building and development codes, which seemed pretty amazing. And then the other, the final one was the resilient strategy for the urgent care center. And they actually put that responsibility as a lead partner onto Deschutes County. So, yes, because we are going to get urgent care in Sisters. So hopefully, well.
So one thing I just wanted to mention that we, I think we should be thinking about is that we got a copy of the report from Phil Schor's about the governor's press conference yesterday and just listening to it, she mentioned that she's gonna look at reopening the state based on input from a lot of people throughout the state and trying to pair up business people with health people and, but it didn't seem like it was a very, there was very much concern with getting it reopened. It seemed very kind of tentative and she was making clear to everybody that it was gonna be a while. And I just wondered if we should, I'm feeling, I want to be on the side of trying to look about the practicality of a lot of the closures and what, whether all of them need to continue to be needed. If, if things get better in Deschutes County, which actually with only four hospitalizations, it doesn't seem like it's very bad. Do we, as a group, want to comment to the governor about what we see here as part of that group she converses with, so.
So when I think about reopening the economy, I think of kind of breaking it into just specific discussions. You know, like a, a beauty salon and barber shop, a gym or a yoga studio. You know, I mean, what, what would you do in one of those things? You know, bars and restaurants, so kind of each one of those things, there's a whole discussion about what is an appropriate flow, distancing, cleaning procedures, what's reasonable, what's risky.
And those are, those are the backbone of America.
Yeah.
Those are the hardworking entrepreneurs that really don't have protection in this case, especially if they're the owner. And so, yes, I definitely.
So, but, you know, as I say, some of those are different conversations than other ones.
But I wonder if we should.
I don't know if we can help or get on a team or.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how they're gonna do it, but I just think it's something we should be thinking about in terms of, and we can do it individually or we can do it collectively, but as I, one of the things I noticed, my bank put out a notice that, for that PPP program, the payroll, that they're not taking applications anymore from independent contractors and self-employed. They're only taking it from businesses, because they, there's apparently questions within the Small Business Administration. So there's a whole population of people that are small, you know, like you said, investors or small one-person businesses that don't have any rescue net beyond the, you know, that.
1,200 dollars?
1,200 dollars, whereas there's other people that are, you know, entities that are working full-time, you know.
That's why I sent this letter on, because this, this hairdresser had clearly done a lot of thinking. I thought it made a lot of sense, so, you know, I just sent it on to Governor's Assistant Samantha West. So I just thought she needs, you know, people are thinking about how they can make a safe difference. But they need to get back to work.
Yeah, a lot of.
Nobody's bailing them out and how far does 1,200 dollars go in today's world?
Oh, yeah. Anyway, I just brought that up, that we might want to talk about it in a little more depth at another meeting or something. Maybe at our next meeting or if we want to respond.
Next Wednesday, is that soon enough? We, we should know more, right? We'll know more with our, our hospital numbers and if the testing is implemented, so what do you think, next Wednesday?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's stuff to talk about, for sure. I don't mind, you know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's all I have, I think.
I didn't bring anything else prepared, but yeah, just following, going to some virtual meetings and coming in here once or twice a week.
Yes.
So tomorrow I will dial in to the Budget Committee meeting, I think.
Oh, I was gonna mention, I mentioned Commissioner DeBonne, the Walden call is at 12:30 tomorrow. And it usually goes for an hour, so if we, do we want to postpone our budget meeting a half hour so we can finish that call or?
It does go, usually goes an hour.
It's up to you.
Would that be too late, I've noticed, to postpone it for, I think that would be good.
Yeah, well, we'd do it right away if, if you make that decision. I'm looking at Sharon if she can, and then we'll notify the citizen members of the Budget Committee and make sure that they can stay presumably an hour later if we're gonna delay the starting hour.
Just a half hour.
Just a half hour delay, because our meeting is.
From 1:00 to 1:30, yeah.
The call ends at 12:30, so it's usually done by 1:30 pretty easily. It just isn't, it hasn't been done by 12 yet, or 12, by 1 yet. And it's, seems like a good call for us to be on.
Yes, it definitely is. I'm sorry, I didn't think of that earlier. So, okay, all right, so then we need to.
You can do that executive session upstairs or we're gonna do it here?
We can just turn off all the.
We can just turn off this and stay here, can't we, unless you need some exercise?
Run up the steps? No, right here is fine.
Okay, all right, so may we close this?